It is 5:30 on June 10, 2025. I'm going to call this meeting, regular meeting of the Martin County Commission to Order. Our first item of business will be the call, the Pledge of Allegiance.
All right. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Geez, we get raised best side there.
Glad it's not stained.
We'll do the roll call. Commissioner Zachmeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Buckley?
Yes.
And Commissioner Morell?
Yes.
Myself, Commissioner Bames here, Commissioner Tocash is absent at this time yet. Auditor Ron is up here at the front and we have Sheriff Kirkmire in the back. Next would be the approval of the agenda. A lot of detail, so don't miss anything.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Next, we'll have the minutes from the previous meeting of May 27, 2025.
Move to approve.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the minutes as presented. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Commissioner Morell, you had bills this month.
I reviewed bills for the month of, or for this time period and find all things in order, so make a motion that we approve the bills for June 10.
I'll second it. It's been moved and seconded to approve the bills for this month. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, a roll call vote. Commissioner Morell?
Yes.
Commissioner Buckley?
Yes.
Commissioner Zachmeyer?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Motion carries. Okay. Anybody have anything other than our 6:00 PM public hearing meeting? Our Board of Equalization meeting? There we go. Got to scratch that out better on my paper here. Seeing none. The business on the agenda is completed. I will adjourn our regular meeting until 6 o'clock. We will call the Board of Equalization meeting to order at that time. All right, it is 6 o'clock. I am going to call the Board of Equalization to order. First off, before we start, just a couple of points here. If you have in order of the way they're listed on the agenda, we will go through these, each one. Please bring up your comments or your, I'm drawing a blank on the word. Appeal, there's the word I wanted. Appeal during, wherever, if you're in the city of Hebron, during that time and so forth on down. Please state your name, property address that you're referring to for the record at the mic. We won't take comments from the audience itself. You have to come to the mic so that we can put it on, it's on record, okay? Half the time, we can't hear what's happening or being said when you're out in the audience. No vulgar language will be tolerated tonight and questions directed to the commission, not to the assessors. We will ask the questions back to them and get the answers that you're asking us. So if we go back and forth with them, it'll be a long night. So with that done.
There we go. Now it's on. Okay, just some short comments and then we'll jump into the cities here. So whether it's Mandan or Morton County, the assessments we do are in accordance with guidance from the North Dakota State Tax Commissioners Office, North Dakota Centricode and nationally recognized standards of mass appraisal of real property. We prepared a short summary of the legislative changes. That's on page three of your packet. We thought we'd go through this since there was quite a few changes this last legislative session. This is just a short summary. There's obviously a lot more to it and a lot more in depth than what we got here, so. First thing, the primary residence credit did increase from $500 to $1,600. That is for tax year 2025 and going forward, so that will be on the tax bills this coming December. I say most primary residence housing trusts are now eligible, but in training we had today, it is actually all trusts held are now eligible for the primary residence credit. So it doesn't matter what kind of trust you're in, you, as long as it's your primary residence, you are eligible to receive the $1,600. Mobile homes, they did grant an additional registration period that will open up, we found in the meeting today, on July 7th and will go to September 1st. The reason for that is so that mobile homes, we can place it on their tax statements. What's happening now is we bill them in December, we find out in June whether they received it, and then the county has to refund that money to them if they've paid. So now this year, they'll have one catch-up period where they got to do an extra registration. After that, they will register at the normal time and then it'll appear on their bill in December. But we have to do one extra registration period this year to get there. So just this one time, mobile homes will have to register during that special one. After that, they'll register the normal January to April timeframe. Local school funding, they did reduce the mandatory mills that all schools have to have from 60 mills to 50 mills, so that will help ease the tax burden a little bit. The veterans credit, they did increase the maximum eligible true and full value from $180,000 to $200,000. That now aligns with the same thing as the homestead credit. Before, there was a little bit of a difference there. It was $200,000 for homestead and $180,000 for veterans, but now they are both $200,000. Levy caps, of course, they did increase the property tax levy for all taxing districts to 3% growth annually. There's a lot of different rules around that. I'm not going to get into those tonight, but you can have a voter approved for higher amounts if the taxing district feels that it's necessary. The assessment notice, what used to be the notice of increase, that is now going to go away and there will now be an annual assessment notice. Every single taxpayer is going to get that notice for every single parcel that they have. It will show their current year value and their prior year value regardless of whether there was an increase or decrease or no change. So everybody is going to get that starting next year. Agricultural land assessments, there is now required use of modifiers. Modifiers is just changing the assessment on agricultural land. That's a formula-driven thing that's in Centricode, but if a farmer has a certain condition on their land, depending on what modifiers are approved, that can be applied to decrease that assessment. Morton County is going to need to decide what those are. We don't know yet, but we do have to put that in place for next year, so we will have to use modifiers. It's no longer optional like it was before. With that, unless there's any questions on any of that, then I will jump into the cities.
Commissioners, have any questions? Nobody's saying anything.
Okay. So the first one up is City of Hebron. So at their meeting, they approved residential of $35,112,800, commercial of $9,964,000, and agricultural land of $230,900. There was a number of adjustments made at the City of Hebron. You can see the list down below there. Those were all approved by the City of Hebron, so unless there's appeals, we're not asking you for any further adjustments tonight. And with that, I'll stand aside for any appeals from Hebron.
So are there any appeals from the City of Hebron? Any appeals from the City of Hebron? Online? We have a couple of them on there. Any appeals from the City of Hebron online? One is guessed. Okay, one more call for the City of Hebron online. And then last call for the City of Hebron in audience and online together. I'm not seeing any, so we will close the appeals for the City of Hebron.
Okay, you want to approve those numbers for a move on?
Commissioners, any discussion on the?
Ms. Chairman, I make a motion, we accept the valuations for the City of Hebron for $35,112,800 for residential, $9,964,000 for commercial, $230,900 for agricultural.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Hebron City numbers for $35,112,800 for residential, $9,964,000 for commercial, and $230,900 for agricultural. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Do a roll call. Commissioner Morell?
Yes.
Commissioner Zachmeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Buckley?
Yes.
Commissioner Tocash?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Motion carries.
With that, we'll move to the City of Mandan. So at their 2025 Board of Equalization, I have 2024 on there, but that was a misprint, didn't update that. They approved residential of $2,000,387,894,000 for commercial, $907,798,300 for agricultural land of $314,600. There is a number of adjustments that were approved at the City of Mandan Board of Equalization. You can see a list of them there. And with that, I will stand aside for Kim Markley, City of Mandan Assessor, to present some additional information before we take appeals.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and County Commissioners. Just a little, these are some of the stuff that I presented at the City BOE. Our total parcel count in the city now is 9,346. You can see that a majority of those are residential with almost 7,000, little over 1,000 for commercial, vacant lots 1,200, and three whole parcels of ag land. When you break it down, the values by class, we have 64% of residential. Commercial and vacant lots make up about 27%. Exemptions, 9%, and you know, just under 1% for the ag. Looking at the sales ratio report, residential, we're at 94.2%, commercial was 96.6%, which are within the tolerance level of 90 to 100%, which is set by the North Dakota State Board So just comparing our numbers from last year to this year, you can see that we had a, our total valuation, like we said, was over, just a little over $3 billion. We had $141,496,000 or 4.9% increase from the 2024 valuation, and then I broke down the new construction contributes, you know, 26 million, and I broke it down by residential and commercial. Comparison on the notice of increase compared to last year, we had 743 notices, which was down significantly from our 1,100 last year. And then we just broke down some of the reasons for those increases were new plots, exemptions that expired new construction, and market increases, reviews, or other adjustments. And that is all I have for you. Do you have any questions for me?
Commissioners, have any questions for Kim? Okay, not? We will open the appeal comments for the City of Mandan. Nope, there's no order. Whoever gets up first.
That was an agenda. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Jeff Zuger. I live at 4320 Lord and Harbor Place, Southeast, Mandan, and I'm here to appeal my assessment for 2025. I've sent a letter, and in the letter, I outlined some of the reasons that I think that the assessment is not appropriate for 2025. Since building the property in 2018, I have approximately 100% increase in the value of my assessed property. And in the last six years, approximately, I don't have exact records, about a 60% increase in my assessed value. It started with increases on my home value, and recently, the last two years now, my land value has gone up from $275,000 to $375,000, a 33% increase over two years. I think that what I'm finding as I've looked at the assessor's site is that they took a bunch, this properties on Lakewood, and they took a bunch of properties with somewhat similar characteristics and moved them from what appears to be $325,000 to $375,000. And I think that there's some unique differentiators that make my lot not fall into that same bucket, but first and foremost, my understanding of the methodology is that you only can use sales from the year in which we're assessing the base from. And I got that from previous discussions around trying to understand market values for my home and what you can compare it to. So I got values from the assessors that show in 2024, there were three waterfront lots sold for values of approximately $207,000 to $331,000, and I've included that in Exhibit A. I don't know that that's the entirety of it, but that's the access to the information I have. The most similar lot to mine was sold for $331,000 around the corner. It's about 10,000 to 15,000 square foot more than my lot, but represents kind of similar directional facing, similar attributes on the bay. So I guess my appeal is one that there's no evidence in 2024 that my $325,000 lot value should go up based on three lots having sold for, two of which sold for substantially less than my lot, and one selling for essentially the same value as my lot. So that's my major challenge with the lot assessment. In addition to not taking into account location on the bay, view down the bay, boat traffic, proximity to the wastewater treatment plant, all have impact negative values on my property when compared to some of the premium larger lots on Lakewood that are substantially larger than mine and perhaps in a better location on the bay. As it relates to my home, one of the challenges I'm having is when I get comps for my home, they only appear to be comps on the water. And if I'm understanding, the way the method works is we assess the land, and that's where a value is tied to my lot, which should be the same size as some other lots in the community of Mandan, but because it's on the water, it's $325,000 as opposed to $150,000. When we assess my home, why would we not assess it along with other similar square footage and designs throughout the entirety of Mandan as opposed to two waterfront homes that sold in that period? So I believe the lot captures the proximity of the location, and the dwellings should be looked at separately in and among other dwellings of that size and design in the city of Mandan. So what's happened is we've raised, proposed to raise my taxes, $60,100, $50,000 of that on the lot, which I think is not justified based on 2024 sales, and another random $10,100 on the home, which I can't find evidence that the home value has changed based on the comps in 2024. So I would respectfully ask that the commission consider keeping my assessed values at the 2024 levels based on the market data. I would stand for any questions.
Commissioners, have any questions for Jeff? Not? Kimberly, do you have any comments or Don, whichever? Probably Kimberly.
I did put the information that I thought was appropriate in your packet. We did have the map that we did provide to the Zuggers. And just to kind of talk about the years and how we use the sales, the sales ratio study that is conducted yearly is to determine the compliance of the tolerance level set by the Board of, the North Dakota State Equalization Board. We are required to have 30 sales, both on the residential side and the commercial side. If we do not, we use one year's worth of sales for that, unless you're under the 30 sales, then you can use two years, which is what happens in our commercial market. So when we're doing the sales ratio study, we use the one year. When we are setting values, we are looking at different areas of town, different types of properties, and we do look, sometimes if there's not a lot of data, we do have to look at other years. So that is kind of what we have represented on the map with the lot sales. Another example of when we've done that is, let's say, Mandan Hill is a good example. We have a new development, so we track the sales of those lots, and we might only have one that sells this year. So we are looking for those trends. Are they staying the same? Are they going up? Are they going down? And sometimes you need more than one year to do that. I do think that the location of the house is also important. You know, houses on the water, yes, we do look at those separate. Different areas of town, we do look at something separate. I'm not going to compare something right down here by the courthouse here to something in Lakewood. They sell different. So yes, we do look at them by the location, the area of town that they are in. Any additional questions for me?
I've got one question. When, let's see, your 20, correct me if I'm wrong, your 2020 sales range, 388 to 500,000, is that correct? It's on page 14?
Yes.
Okay.
Looking at the sales that we provided here, we broke it down by square foot.
Okay, that appears to be the high point. So the assessment, are we averaging at this point, or how do we arrive at, you know, it's meant to go, values go up, values go down, so.
Yeah, I mean, we look at the different characteristics of the property, and then we look at how they're selling. Do we need to change things to get in line with the sales? Is that answering your question?
Not really. I'm just trying to understand.
It's pretty complicated. I mean, you have to go out and get the correct characteristics of the properties in that area of town. You don't have cookie cutter houses, so there's going to be difference. If I remember right, the first two sales, is it this one? These have no basements?
Those both have basements.
So like the first two on the sales sheet, those have basements.
Okay.
You know, where yours, you have no basement?
Cross basement, correct.
Correct. So you have to take all those things into consideration, so those could make differences.
They're studying hard.
I do have one more question, just chairman, for Mr. Zuger. What I'm seeing right now is, you know, you're being assessed at $283 a square foot, and what I'm seeing on the rest of these is that's in the ballpark or lower per square foot? Is that a fair assessment?
Commissioner Tocash? I also in my letter stated that I think that the method of taking my bonus room above the garage and counting it into the square footage versus a basement or a vertical two-story shouldn't be how you approach that just because it happens to be not a two-story. So I'm being, my total square footage is being impacted by a room that you have to go up the steps to get to, so I think that that skews the value per square foot.
Have you done the math without that?
I have, yes.
Do you know what that number comes in at?
So if I compare it to if it were above my home as opposed to above my garage, it would, effectively, it's in line or I'm being over-assessed. And to be clear, my main dispute is the lot. It just appears completely inconsistent with the methodology and doesn't align with market data, but both I'm taking exception to.
Ms. Chairman, question?
Commissioner Zachmeyer?
Do you have any houses in this neighborhood that are being, that would be assessed at the level that you think would be fair? Do you have anything, other properties? We have these comparable properties here, but did you bring any comparable properties, even if they were on the Burleigh County side, that would show that your argument is justified by other properties, other examples?
Commissioner Zachmeyer, I do, I did not bring them with me. I had a realtor run. I thought we had to restrict it to 2024 sales, so it's hard to get a realtor to run 2024 sales with square footage similar to mine in the City of Mandan, so that was my understanding. I have that data. I did not include it in the packet. Most of those sales are substantially lower. Some of the properties were built and they're on the Missouri River and they're $700,000 with 4,000 square feet, built in 1976. So I didn't feel like I could stand here and justify that. These home sales are pretty few and far between for the square footages. And I also disagree with respectfully that you would only look at waterfront homes when comparing to mine because the lot already accounts for the waterfront. There's a lot and a dwelling. I would be happy to email those or provide them to the commission following this, the market study that I had a realtor do for me, if that would be helpful.
Go ahead.
Was the market study given to the City of Mandan at their equalization meeting? Did they see it?
Yeah, Commissioner Zachmeyer, I sent a letter with not quite as much information, and I was out of town, and the evidence that I wanted to walk through, I tried to do remote and the technology didn't work, so no.
Did you show that evidence to the tax director for the City of Mandan for her evaluation?
I've got, Commissioner Zachmeyer, I have about 20 emails between myself and the assessing department over this period of March through today or February, whenever we received the notice. I think it was March, I apologize. Disputing giving methodology. we received the notice. I think it was March. I apologize. Disputing, giving methodologies, giving examples of property I own in Bismarck, where I presented similar market data, and they made adjustments downward in a residential market. However, I did not put them in the packet for you all today, but again, would be happy to provide it later if that will be helpful.
Mr. Chair, I don't have a question for Mr. Zouger or for Kim. I'm just trying to read through, I'm reading through your email. I'm reading through when you use the comparison of the one lot that's closest in value, but of a different size, different attributes. But I'm just trying to wrap my head around the differences between yours and that one. Obviously, I don't have the visual, but that's what I'm trying to evaluate.
If we're looking at the two thousand twenty-four value, it's the green one right there, and it's by that bridge. If you.
We don't have.
We got black and whites.
Oh, my goodness, black and white.
Budget cuts. Trying to save money.
That doesn't.
The one in the middle, the one on the end?
Right in there. Right there is where the one sold in two thousand twenty-four. Mr. Zouger's lot is right there. This particular lot was appealed at the city of Mandan. They have an erosion issue on that lot. They provided us estimates. So that is one of the issues with that one. Just wanted to make that comment, that that was something that was reviewed. And we have it flagged until that is repaired, that they were given, you know. So I think that affected the sale price on that particular lot.
Okay, so again, looking at the bridge, which would be the south side of the bridge, then, correct? Okay.
Yes.
I got my bearings out there, then.
Okay.
Well, I think we're all reading through the letter again, as, see if there's anything else. Okay.
Mr. Chair, and Jeff, just, I'm not finding an identifiable resolution, other than we can move forward and invite you to continue to communicate with the city of Mandan and the county, of course. And if if there's a correction that being made, they would bring it forward as an abatement, if you're capturing that.
Commissioner Morell, is that the only process I have, or?
Well, if we're able to identify a solution, or what is a clear difference, that's why we're pausing here, because we're trying to review and evaluate. But if we're not able to come forward with something that would, that could work, that would be the next process. Or you can also appeal it.
To the state.
To the state, to the state Board of Equalization.
Commissioner Morell, fellow commissioners, maybe just to reiterate my point, my lot is substantially smaller than the balance of the lots that are appraised or assessed at three seventy-five. If I had a better view of the bay, I could show you how the three seventy-five lots are premium lots that look down the bay, that are substantially in a better location, closer to the front of the bay, that they're just substantially different than my lot facing across from other property with boat traffic in and out consistently. So they're just substantially different. They would sell different in the market today, but for the fact that they have a home on them. Additionally, the lots right across from me are not developed. Those are assessed at three hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, where mine is proposed to be three hundred and seventy-five. And my lot's developed, so there's not much you can do with it at this point.
Kim, is there any reflection with monolineage?
At this time, all along that bay, that south bay down there, we all have them assessed at the three hundred and seventy-five, unless they are undeveloped. We do have them at three eighteen. Is that what you said?
Three eighteen, change.
Yep. And we do, we do assess them a little less. They do not have utilities brought into the lot. You know, they don't have the sprinklers or landscaping, all that.
Not developed.
Right, they're undeveloped, so we don't put it at the full value.
Mr. Chairman, I do have one more question. There's a lot way on the riverside. I'm somewhat familiar with this area down here. And I see a number on there that I can make out at four eighty-five. Is that, is that correct?
Up in the north corner there?
Correct.
Yes, four eighty-five.
And that's, that was the sale price for that?
Yep, that was the sale price. And that was in, I believe, twenty-two.
Twenty-three.
Okay, and that?
Twenty-two, twenty-three. Thank you.
Yeah. And again, that's what it sold for. It is a little bit of an anomaly. I believe that lot was purchased by the by the association?
Yes, I believe that's correct.
Correct, okay. But that was the sale price.
Commissioners, what do we want to do here?
I believe Commissioner Morell had offered a suggestion. That doesn't close the door completely.
Mr. Chair and Jeff, speaking for myself, of course, is when, when the city of Mandan says that they've evaluated all the developed, meaning there's a structure on there, all the developed properties at the same value, and, correct me if I'm wrong, Kim, but if they're assessing the properties at the same value with similar characteristics, what we're trying to identify is how we can, how we can separate yours different from the others. That's what, that's what we're trying to identify. And that's why I say is if, you know, we're not able to come to a resolution this moment, because we have to, if I'm correct with the law, tonight is the final night. We have to seal everything tonight so we can submit it. But again, that, that doesn't prevent you from moving forward, because you can still work with the respective jurisdictions and present your case, or as mentioned, you can present it to the Board of Equalization also.
At state?
The state, I'm sorry, the State Board of Equalization also. But again, it's just going off the information that every parcel with that, with frontage is at that same valuation.
Commissioner Morell, I appreciate that. I don't know if that's an accurate statement. You can go four lots around the bay, if we had the map up, and see it three hundred or two seventy-five. So they grouped together a bunch of lots that they thought had similar characteristics. Mine is a much smaller lot than most of the premium lots that it got grouped in with, as can see by the chart of the parcels that I provided. If you go around the corner, there's lots similar size to mine that don't happen to be on a point, which may or may not add value to that. I would, I would point you four, four lots to the, to the south and east is at least fifty thousand dollars lower in value than my lot, same square footage, maybe even more. So I'm not understanding the methodology. And a forty thousand square foot premium lot, like Freeze's house, for example, is three seventy-five. My lot's twenty-five thousand square feet, not even close to the same lot. It would never sell for the same price, and it's three seventy-five. So that, those are the difference that I'm trying to point out.
And you're referencing four south and east? I don't know if you got the imagery there. I'm looking at, at the attachment that you sent. So there's one with a black roof, and immediately to the right of that, that gray roof?
Those two, if we had the assessor's site and could click on them, my recollection is that they are at least fifty thousand dollars less in assessed value than my lot.
And you're talking a land value?
The land, yes, the land. Just, I haven't, I apologize, I haven't spent hours on this. I just did some spot checking. Tried to include the comps from the city site in Exhibit C for the home. Tried to include the data that I have. I'm not a realtor. I don't have access to a lot of this information. I went on the assessor's site. There's great information there, but it's very time consuming. And this is important enough that I tried to put the information together that I thought would be helpful.
Block the assessor's site.
Mr. Chairman, I do have one more question here.
Yep, go ahead.
Mr. Zouger, the lot you just circled, south and east of yours, is that, are we talking the same frontage, waterfrontage area, or is that in that corner, that clip, that they kind of box down in there, and it's less waterfrontage?
Commissioner Tokash, no, this is on the straight section. It would be Andy Meldal's house is the one I think I looked at, where it's a square lot. Now, I have a narrow front and a wider back, but similar square footage, square lot, as opposed to, I understand, I've lived on the water as long as perhaps you have, lots on the back corner fight for access. My lot out on the point fights with getting hit from boats coming by too fast, and coming by at night and hitting my dock and hitting my boat. So there's pros and cons. My lot is not a premium lot based on its location.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, just, I'm looking at the county GIS right now. I'm checking all your neighbors.
So none of this is based on river frontage, waterfrontage?
No, footage, no.
Is that something that they should maybe consider?
You take. Commissioner Morell, do you have something? Are you still looking?
I'm looking at, right now, I'm looking at lot sizes, and I'm going back and looking at, at the values that are assigned within. So the one that you referenced on that south and east, the one, well, basically taking yours and going counterclockwise. So lot size, you're at point five nine acres. Your adjacent property is point six three, then point five two, then point five oh, and point four two. That's where I'm at right now. Now I'm looking at, at the values. Apologize for the, for the time. So again, looking at valuations on two thousand twenty-four, again, what's populated in Morton County parcels. So going from yours as a point of reference and working counterclockwise. So point five nine acres, valuation of one point one three, one four, rounding. Point six three acres, valuation of one point five. Point five two acres, valuation one point two. Point five acres, valuation of nine hundred some, and point four two acres, again, valuation at nine hundred some. So they are diminishing in valuation, but it's also reflective of the size of the parcel. But I'm also looking at, you know, the one that's at point five two acres, so two doors from you to the east, is valued slightly more than yours with a smaller parcel.
Commissioner Morell, is that the land or the entirety?
It's combined. It's combined.
Sure.
The information I have right here.
Sure, yeah. And I'm essentially stating that it's the land piece that I'm.
Right.
Most challenged with, if you will. If we took the same method as the value per square foot of a home, and I provided a table of just some lots that are also proposed to be at three seventy-five in the first page of my letter, my lot at three seventy-five at twenty-five thousand eight hundred square feet versus thirty-seven thousand square feet, the price per square foot obviously is substantially different. So using the square foot methodology, you could not get to the same conclusion that these other lots listed here, on a per square foot basis, are, should be at three seventy-five, if mine, in fact, should be at three seventy-five. And again, back to the market data, part of why I believe you should use shorter durations is to a point that I believe you mentioned, is values go up and down. You can have years where the values decline, and that's what I believe the data shows. If the interest rates are higher, perhaps there's not as much activity on waterfrontage. Previous to that, there were some premium prices paid for lots, admittedly, based on this data set. That's not what two thousand twenty-four. data set, but that's not what 2024 shows. Commissioners, given the other audiences that are here, if I may, I simply, again, I'm asking that the assessed values stay the same as 2024 because there's not a basis for increasing them in 2025. And I appreciate your time considering this. I know you've got, it looks like a full agenda this evening, but I appreciate the time and I would strongly, again, reiterate that that's my ask, based on the information and the market data.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Yep, thank you.
Before we move on, I just wanted to set the record straight on a few points that came up during this.
Okay.
Number one, as far as tonight's meeting, according to Centricode, you just have to hold it within the first 10 days. It does not say you have to complete it, so you are not required to complete it tonight. But it does say you'll work day to day until you've gotten your work done. The only deadline we have is I have to submit numbers to the state by June 30th, so we would have to have final numbers in time for me to submit them to the state. So that means wait until your next commission meeting would not be a good idea. You would probably have to hold a special meeting to complete tonight's work. But there is no requirement that you finish tonight if you so choose.
Okay.
Second thing is, the next step would be the State Board of Equalization. In Mr. Zuger's case, he did appeal at the city, he's appealed at the county, he's preserved his right to go to the state, have them come review it. They do a very comprehensive review because they built in that they got three months to do that, where you guys get very little. But they will send a team out to his house, they'll meet with the city, they'll meet with him, then they will recompute the value themselves independently from the city, and then they will make a decision. We've seen them do that before. So that would be his next step. If he's still unhappy after that is completed, then the next step would be the abatement process. So that's all I had, unless there's any questions.
Commissioners, what are your wishes?
Mr. Chair, as much as I understand where Mr. Zuger's coming from, and again, being in the building world, I get that part of it too. It's just, it's hard for us right now with this information, trying to be able to justify that adjustment with the data that we have. So with that, Mr. Chair, I definitely would invite him to appeal it to the State Board of Equalization and be able to hopefully get some resolution through that process.
Don't think, I don't think we need a motion if you're doing that. Great, John?
Yes, there's a motion to deny.
I would make a motion that we deny the appeal for 4320 Board and Harbor Place Southeast and invite the property owner to appeal to the Board of, State Board of Equalization.
I would second that.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to deny the appeal by, for the property at 4320 Board and Harbor Place Southeast and to ask them to appeal at the State Board of Equalization. Is there any discussion? Any discussion?
Just to comment to the property owners again, understand exactly where your question is. Just, we're trying, by the questions we're asking, we're trying to identify that justification. We're not able to create a justifiable rationale, because again, it's your adjacent property owners that would also come forward with the same question too, after the fact. So that's the other things that we're looking at.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Commissioner Morrell?
Yes.
Commissioner Tocash?
Yes.
Commissioner Buckley?
Yes.
Commissioner Zachmeyer?
Yes.
And myself, B A S. Motion carries. All right, now we will ask for any other comments from the City of Mandan.
Commissioners, Casey Sheeler, 701 Johns Drive. Two years ago, I had an 8% increase. Last year, I had an 8% increase, and this year, I think it's 15, so $63,100 increase. My house is in Diane's First Edition. It is a unique property. When I first bought this house in 2017, the comparables were all over the place. It sat on the market for a year and a half before I bought it, and they couldn't sell it. I ended up picking it up a lot less than what they were asking. When I got assessed this last time, I noticed the comparables were similar. Nothing compares to it. It's a unique property. I've done some research around Bismarck Mandan, and I've found that a lot of the homes are right around the same area per square foot here, or in between 158, 128 per square foot. They want to raise me to 212, which is quite high. I understand my home is bigger and newer than the ones around me, but I don't think it's quite that high. I believe, after I've looked on a few apps and found the values, my neighborhood, mine's not going to be $200,000 more than my neighbors across the street from me. A few of my houses in my, on my street have sold recently, and I don't have the information on that, but if we could compare that to the information I have, I think my house is valued at $459,000. So around another 8% increase instead of a 15. The one across the street is 700 Johns Drive, and I believe that's in between 312 and 315. 709, 255. I think that one sold for around 260. That one just sold. And going off of that, basically, is information on my phone. So I'm asking for just a fair raise instead of a $63,000 increase.
Looking at their phones again. They're looking at their maps again.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay. That's this one, it's just an added color.
Can I put my phone on here? I'm not sure if we can see that. My house is right here. Zero. Zero.
Mm-hmm.
So your belt was 92, you purchased it when, what year?
2017.
2017. Have you done any improvements in that duration?
I have. I have put vinyl plank flooring, I painted the upstairs, I put carpet in my basement, and what else have I done here? I wrote it down. Carpet in my bedrooms upstairs, and I painted, I had wallpaper on the walls, and I took that off and I painted it. And I've gotten all my materials from Menards and I've done it all myself.
Sure. The basement, though, you mentioned about, you know, laying carpet or flooring down, was the, has the basement been finished? Or did you finish it?
It was, it was finished, and I took the old carpet out and I put new carpet in.
Okay.
And I have wood paneling down there.
Okay.
I have fiberglass showers that are original from the 90s in my bathrooms. My kitchen is original, original countertops, siding on my house is 33 years old, metal siding. Windows are original.
The questions are more so, when, when you do, I'll try to sum it like this, when you do cosmetic upgrades like flooring and paint, it affects your ability to sell it, yes, but for what they look at for the characteristics, for the assessment, they're looking at more the overall. That's why I was asking if your basement is finished, or, you know, if your garage is heated, or any of those types of things, because that is what changes some of the characteristics in the finish of a home for the assessment purposes. If, if I can, if that sounds reasonable.
Yeah, I got you. There's quite a few properties in Bismarck I've found that they have a three-car garage about the same size as mine, and they're at this 21716 Domino Drive, it's at 486. And they got it at 122 square foot. And 1501 Fourth Avenue Northeast, Mandan, is at 158 a square foot, and it's a 1993 home too. The other one was 92. So putting me at 212 is quite, I mean, a jump. It's, I don't have tile floors or marble countertops. You know, I have old, older oak, golden oak cabinets in my home, but like I said, it's a unique house.
Sure. You're, I'm looking at the street view. Is it a walkout by chance, or is it just a?
It's an eight-foot in the front, and then it, it's a four-foot in the back, so the foundation stays.
Okay. And then looking at the valuation history, so 2024, it was at 5740, correct? Going off of our parcel data?
I.
The tax statement.
430 was prior year. Our total tax. All I'm saying is, is this $63,000 is going to put me in the same payment for my taxes that if it was down in Lakewood or Promontory Point area, and I'm not in that area. I know I should be paying more than my neighbors, of course. I have a newer house, it's bigger, but $200,000, that's quite a bit. I don't think I could sell it for that. That's why I came down here today.
So Kimberly, is there, want I explain some of the, what you have?
I asked me to explain what I, what we gave, the handout I gave you. Is that your question?
Yeah, kind of.
We just, we got some sales here in this area of town, and then we marked on them. Like, there's a couple up there that, the first one on there, it sold twice. Excuse me, it has no garage. But there is a couple sales in here too. There's one for 472, one for 400,000. And like we said, we have this one assessed at 216 a square foot. These sales that we gave you range from 177 without the garage up to 296. And I do agree that this is a newer house in that neighborhood.
So is there a change in, in why did we jump 16%? What was the big change to make it go up so much? Just the comparables?
Go ahead, I can't answer that off the top of my head.
My name is Jonathan Fleischer, I'm an appraiser for the City of Mandan. It was in our review area last year, so we did do a deeper dive in that neighborhood of what is, what houses are measured, confirmed our records. So there was that adjustment from last year as part of that process.
So in other words, it was, there were some changes in your square footage or whatever that you had figured from before?
It was mostly the characteristics of the property, being that 1992 with 1978, it was an infill, an empty lot for many years and was built later than the neighborhood. Some of the other ones, north of Division Street there, saw similar increases after we did our review. So it is sort of a characteristics of that house, that three-stall garage, that 2,200 square feet up. So that did adjust our value.
And as you alluded to, it's 20 years newer than its neighboring parcels.
Correct.
As far as construction.
Yes, as far as construction. And size-wise, it's probably maybe 1,000 square feet larger than most of the ones in that neighborhood, just because they're all tuck-under garages and.
It's a stall.
Yeah, it's very unique. Mr. Schaller is right, that for that neighborhood, that house is very unique.
I'm not going to argue with that, there's a lot of double garages that were tucked under on that street. My next-door neighbor has a double garage, but.
My next-door neighbor has a single garage, but most of them on that street have a double garage.
But what I was saying earlier when I was asking some of those questions, that those are the characteristics. I wish there'd be a sheet that you guys can just produce and show that, well, I've got one here for, I'm doing assess, mine's getting assessed next, this summer. So I'm filling out my characteristics so I can get it correctly evaluated too.
This one's right across the street from me and it's a double garage.
But again, looking at apples and apples, you know, not that you have the answer.
Right.
But apples and apples, so a two-car garage against yours with a three-car. Age of that construction versus age of your construction, two-by-four walls versus two-by-six walls, that's what they're looking at. Square footage of that one versus square footage of yours, amount of finished space, main floor, lower floor, garage versus finished space, those are, that's the characteristics. Because again, you look at, as an example, pre-1976, before Unified Building Code, construction was obviously a lot different than it was post-1976.
I understand.
Again, just trying to help clarify some of the rationale. Just trying to help clarify some of the rationale. Again, Mr. Chair, I trying to identify a solution to his question myself. I'm not able to identify anything that can give you a direct solution tonight. Unless the other commissioners might have other questions.
Is that garage attached or detached?
It's attached.
It is attached.
It is.
Commissioners, what are your wishes? Questions, comments?
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion that we deny the appeal and invite the property owner to appeal to the State Board of Equalization.
I'll second it.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to invite the property owner to, or to deny the most, or the appeal and invite the owner to appeal to the State Board of Equalization. Is there any other discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call vote. Commissioner Morel?
Yes.
Commissioner Buckley?
Yes.
Commissioner Zachmyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Tocash?
Yes.
Myself, yes.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any more from the city of Mandan?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Jason Frank. I don't have a written appeal. I wasn't told I needed one. Do I need a written appeal?
No.
No?
No.
I got a letter or I got basically just, just all my appraisals and basically what I'll be presenting. You guys like them?
If you have a copy, yes.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Hello again, Commissioners. My name is Jason Frank. My address is 2503 Macedonia Avenue, Mandan. My house was appraised September 14th, 2021 before the build and it was a sales approach by Mr. Alcunick. The house was re-inspected February 1st, 2022 with no change to the value according to Alcunick. The city put a mass appraisal value of 2.1485 for the 2023 tax statement. That's a 30% increase in less than one year. It's basically 500 grand. The house was reappraised by a certified appraiser on July 12th, 2024 for $2 million. It's 148,500 less than the previous tax statement for 2023. The city, the city mass appraisal value for 2023 was 2.296,800. That was 296,800 more than the certified appraiser says it was worth. According to the North Dakota Stat, State Tax Commissioner Property Tax Guidelines Evaluation Concept, the sales comparison method is one of the more accurate methods of estimating market value. This method involves comparing the property being appraised to similar properties to have recently sold and reflect the actions of buyers and sellers in the real estate market. Although the city of Mandan uses a mass appraisals, it is not always the most accurate way to assess some of our homes. It's clear that my property is being grossly overvalued by the Mandan City Assessor's Office. What is unclear is how the mass appraisal techniques applied by the Mandan Assessor's Office arrived at a market value grossly higher than what the North Dakota State Tax Commissioner's Property Tax Guideline Valuation Concept suggests is more accurate method. And that's the sales comparison method. It would be valid, equitable, and just for you to lower my property calculated asset value to at least the sales approach method. With all the extra unjust property tax that was paid, it would be nice that that downward deviation allowed in Morton County of 10% of the true and full value also be applied when calculating the property tax. If you guys got any questions?
You're just below the hill at Fort Lincoln School to the west.
Above the hill, but above the hill, but yes.
Okay.
In the cul-de-sac at the end. I've been down Macedonia a couple of times.
It's not a cul-de-sac. It's at the end of the cul-de-sac. The city made me put it into, put it into the city right before I built.
So you're at just over 6,000 square feet?
Um, if that's what it says.
Total living area?
Yeah.
Because some of the comparables that you guys are coming up with are at 37, 35, 28,000, or 2,800 square feet, so.
I guess my issue isn't more so with the square footage. So I'm a professional. I do this for a living. Get a lot of houses in your city, develop your land. I'm not asking for any favors or any, anything that nobody else gets, but just the overvalue of the property is the biggest thing. According to the North Dakota State Tax Commissioner Property Tax Guidelines, the valuation concepts they want us to use to get a little bit more accurate would be that sales approach. I would have appealed last year, but I was told that my appraisal wouldn't work last year, so I waited until this year to bring it in.
Hmm, okay.
So I waited a year for it. And being in the industry, I bet you maybe five times in my life, over 600 homes built, that if something doesn't appraise, I've maybe had maybe five of them that don't appraise. And when they don't appraise, I always get asked to bring it down. There's actually deals that got wrecked in Mandan because a house didn't appraise, high-end homes in Lakewood. Over like 100 grand and a $3 million house. So that's how important that appraisal is. I understand your guys' mass appraisals. I get how you do it, but certain circumstances, I think you got to look outside the box.
So the State Board upheld the 23 numbers that were presented? The State Board of Equalization upheld the numbers that were presented back then?
Um, I can't remember. I apologize.
I just have a comment. If I may.
Yes.
Um, looking at the appraisal that, that Mr. Frank shared with us, I think the biggest difference we have is in the shop, in the value. I think that's where our big difference is, looking at that and looking at what we have. We have a 4,700 square foot shop that's finished and that, that is our biggest difference. So just let me know if you have more questions.
Okay. Thank you, Kim.
That would be using the mass approach. I'm using what a certified appraiser included in the home and that is included in them two appraisals.
Commissioners, have any questions, comments? For Mr. Fleck? Frank? Sorry, I said Fleck. Not to me. Mr. Frank.
Everybody, I got two first names. What do you do?
Um, the question that you had on the 2023 appeal to the State Board, yes, it was, they did uphold our value. And the only other note that I had made is that this I'm sorry. That this year was a bank appraisal, which is just a little bit different than a mass appraisal. I don't think I have anything else.
The bank appraisal is a sales approach, which according to the North Dakota Stat Commissioners Property Tax Guidelines Valuation Concept says is the best way. I also got that other appraisal just to, just to, just to make sure that, that my first appraisal was not wrong. And according to my second appraisal, the value is not the way it actually allows.
Excuse me. Just for the other commissioner's sake, so we have one dated 21 and then the second one is dated 24.
The 21 was also came back and he did, in the beginning of 21, it was appraised because it was the build. And then he had to come back and he go wait and make sure the property value did not change. And that's why I stated in February 1st, 2022 is when he came back and basically evaluated again. So he basically gave me two appraisals on the one because he had to come back and make sure that the property value did not change.
And to ask a question that Commissioner Zachmyer asked earlier, so were you able to give this information to the city assessor during their board of equalization?
I wasn't here during that, during that time. I actually came to the Morton County one at the library, but wrong time, wrong place. So then they, they came here. So that's why I came here.
So there was a $75,000 tax exemption for new build after that property value and the State Board held. And then that was removed. So that's part of the increase because then there's no exemption anymore.
I didn't take the exemption. I did take the exemption. I guess I took the exemption. Don't I have to go for that? Could you get that information to me?
I think, I think your attorney did that for you.
If you guys could get that for me, that would be wonderful. I don't really have ever signed that. Because you guys always used to, you guys always used to put that on all my homes I built and I don't see it anymore. So a lot of my customers don't even apply for that. So I don't, I'm fairly positive I did not apply for that unless you let me do it afterwards and my attorney did. I'm not sure. Would you guys let that go past if it was past my? What's the time period?
I think it's two years.
Okay, so even if I was moved in, okay, because I had him work on that well after I was moved in. If you get that information from me. If you guys get, I'm not saying it didn't happen, but I don't, I've never, ever, you guys used to put it on the table. I used to have all my customers sign it. I know you guys don't do that anymore.
Okay. So that's a part of the increase then? Yeah, a little bit. It's not all of it, but it's a, it's a little bit of it.
Again, the only, the only hardship I have is the banks I use, the customers, the customers that live in your city that I build for, we all buy, like, what your home is worth is what an appraiser tells you your home is worth. You may think it's worth more, but true and full value isn't what I think my home is worth. I can have Josh Tramell fly over the top of my house and say it's worth $7 million and he can give me the money. But guess what? That does not mean that the house is worth that. So.
Okay. Commissioners, have any questions or for Mr. Frank or for Mandan?
Why would we approve if it's been denied?
We're going up from there to yeah, 2307, which it says is a increase.
200,000 about? 2.3, yeah, about 200,000.
Yeah. Well, it's 75% of the exemption. So it's 125,000.
Yeah.
Pretty hard to compare.
It's hard to get comparables when it's a lot different than, than everything else. That's part of the problem here.
And the comparables are, you know, like, the majority of them comparables are water lots. I have to look at the appraisers again, appraisals again, you know, or the comparables again, but a lot of them were the water lots. Yes, I have a beautiful place. There's no doubt about it, but you can replicate my place. We all know you cannot replicate water lots anymore.
Yep.
It's just about impossible, so.
Mr. Chair, I need to abstain myself from this decision. Mr. Frank and my employer do business together.
Uh, who's your employer?
Hart.
Oh, I had no.
No, that's fine.
Yeah.
Just, that's right.
What's that?
I said, that's right.
Oh, yeah.
Kim, I have a question, if I can ask. So why are you saying that about the shop? That there's a discrepancy, or can you explain?
If I looked at the appraisal correctly, they have the shop valued at 188,000, and I think that shop is, is worth way more than that.
Oh, in the, in his appraisal?
The way I understand it, you know, when you're doing an appraisal for a bank and they're talking about outbuildings, they have rules about how, you know, about how to value outbuildings, which aren't the same as ours, is my understanding. So that's where I'm saying the value. I believe that shop is worth more than that, and that's where I feel the biggest discrepancy is between the, the bank appraisal and ours.
Because it's all, it's all attached, one, it's two separates.
And we, when we say bank appraisal, we, we mean sales approach.
Correct.
Okay, so exactly what an article describes.
Is that?
On the one sheet in the packet, there's two structures. One is the house and one is the front of the shop.
Oh, okay, I see.
And again, discrepancy is not the square footage is, or shops, or any attachments or anything like that. Everything that's stated in the appraisal that he gave is all included in all that.
That shop, not, is it finished out inside?
It is finished, yeah.
Finished nice.
Also, the bank said it was 188.
Yeah, the bank says it's 188. Okay. Paul's punching numbers.
Mr. Chair, question?
Yes.
The shops that are listed here, are they like, on this page, are these old shop condos?
Excuse me, yes. Those are the, the sales that we have. That's what we have to look at. So we list is.
This shop, that's, this is a private home shop. This doesn't have a condo in it.
Yes, I, I totally agree. If I had a sale of a shop just like his, I would put it on the list for you. It is very unique, and yes, it is next to his residential house.
It's not on a separate lot?
No, no, it's on the same lot, on the same parcel, like, across the driveway.
So Mr. Chairman, another question, the shop valued at 337.7?
Mm-hmm. And the bank said it's at 188. A lot of difference.
Especially when these are shop condos, totally different.
Well, yeah, they're living in them.
What's that?
They're living in those.
Yeah, or they've got office space.
Yeah, these aren't. So.
I guess that's why I asked that question.
Mr. Chairman, I would agree with the bank on the sale of the, about the condo, about the.
Shop.
The shop. Because I'm pretty sure you'd have to sell the whole thing as a whole, not on separate lots.
That is 100% correct.
So you'd have to sell the whole thing together.
The city's comparables were with all shop condos that could be around as businesses, but mine is just has to all be sold together. That is correct.
Paul's punching numbers over there, too. Paul, got something you're trying to figure out, or no? Okay. You got something?
So there's, Mr. Frank, there's no plumbing in your shop. It's just.
There's water.
There's water. There's water. But, but you can't, they're not, it's not a condo where you could live there.
Absolutely, no. Nope, nope. It's just, it's just water and a bathroom, just lots of shops. I built a lot of shops in the same area.
It's, it's finished, so you could be in there, but it's not living quarters.
No, but I mean, it's got finished floors, it's heated, it's got sheet rock, there's a toilet room, two fixture bath, two or three.
What do we consider finished floors? Concrete?
Concrete, stained, you know, sheet rocks, kitchenette seating area. Little, yeah, little kitchenette type area.
Mr. Chair, I've got a question. You know, we're, we're wholly, I guess, under-equipped to fairly value this as a, as a group. We're all struggling with it. And so all we can do is ask questions about the property and, and so on and so forth. What, you know, the shop condos we're talking about, you know, I've been in a number of those and, and, yeah, roughly around 150 bucks a square foot, something like that, but those aren't living quarter shop condos. Those are, those are, some of them can be awfully nice. But again, it's, arbitrarily throw a number out here as a group, I don't, I don't know what the value is. I really don't. And, and we're looking at, if I'm correct here, and we're showing the, the shop is valued, we're valuing it at 71, 71 and 15 cents a square foot.
Without property, I think the other numbers you're throwing out there probably were property. Commissioner told Cash that the discrepancy isn't what, what it's square footage or any of them numbers, your formula and your masses. I understand your formula and masses. But, but I, I went in and got a, got what the North Dakota Stat, State Tax Commissioner Property Tax says is the best way to value a home, value a property. So none of that is in question. What's in question is, my certified appraiser told me on two different occasions that he substantially less than what your guys' is a mass appraisal is. So I understand you guys do mass appraisals, but in certain situations, I would hope you guys would understand that. Since it's a little out of the box, we've always said it's out of the box, could we go back to what they say is the best approach and just go off of that approach? I don't want to pay a penny less than what it's valued at because that's how I build my homes and I build your city. But, but obviously, we all know it's a certain situation. I get that. But again, I can only borrow if somebody comes in and wants to buy my house true and full value. What will wreck the sale pretty much every time is they will not give more than that, more than what the bank can value that property at. And at that moment, at that moment, that's what the appraiser said it was, said it was valued at on two different occasions.
And I'm not questioning the appraisal, you know, and, but it does say that in the, in the letter from the appraiser, that it's for financing purposes only, and, and that there's, there's some caveats in there as well, but.
Could you answer the question maybe then? Because I guess I'm a little uncertain. When I have a house appraised, is there a different verbiage that they should be using when they're appraising these homes?
I, I don't know.
I'm just saying that's the same appraisal that the bank will use.
Mm-hmm.
The same, the same appraisal that the State Tax Commissioner Property Tax Guidelines Valuation Concepts is. They say that's the, the best way to do it, so they are doing it the same exact way.
And, and what I'm saying is there, there's a difference between what the bank will loan someone on a property versus what the property could sell for.
Depending on the loan.
Correct. It could be higher, it could be lower, it could be, you know, they're, they're disjointed is what I'm trying to get to.
But the concept's the same. Whatever that, whatever that appraisal is that you have is the same exact appraisal that the banks use for any one of your guys' homes when they're appraised, the same exact one. Whether it says bank appraisal or whatever it says, that's the same appraisal.
So, Nathan, if I could, so Don, why is the state saying to use the map, or maybe Kim can answer, one of you, they're saying that the state is recommending mass and we use something else?
In mass appraisal, we're still using sales, and that's, you know, the sheet right here that we're showing you. We're showing you comparable sales. You know, we have the property information up at the top. The next little section is sales that we ran in our office. The next little section is, we're showing the sales from the appraisal, the Mandan parcels from that appraiser, and we're breaking them down by square footage there. So I'm showing like the house, the dwelling and the land and stuff is at 321 a square foot. We're showing sales from 246 to 458, and then some of the sales from his appraisal was 327 to 458. And then we broke down some sales of shop condos and shops, showing you what things are selling for per square footage. We are lower than what those shows, sales are showing, but that, we did lower it because we're accounting for that isn't on residential parcel. That's not why we're, why we're not doing 100 or 150 a square foot on that shop. That's why we're at 71. So we're accounting for that, being on residential property. Does that answer your question, Jackie? Commissioner Buckley?
Yep, that's fine. Thank you, Kim.
So, so a question, true and full value to the city's definition is using, using what defin, because we're still using true and full value when we're assessing homes, correct? So, so is that definition different than what the Sentry Code states? I'm sorry. Because I'm just, I'm just using the same guidelines.
I guess that's what, that's why I was asking that question.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, yeah, absolutely.
Maybe Don can.
Try to clear this up a little bit. So whenever you're doing appraisal, whether it's private party appraisal or mass appraisal, there's three approaches you use. The income approach is primarily for apartments or income-producing properties, sales approach, and then cost approach. So the difference between the appraisals he's getting from the bank in our mass appraisal is mass appraisal creates a model, and we plug the information for properties into that model, still using all three approaches, use, primarily is the cost approach, but you're still using sales to kind of drive that model because your model needs to produce values that are in line with those sales. So you're always tracking that. But you're still using all three approaches. The state does not elevate one above the other, so the, the sales approach is one of the three approaches. Theoretically, if you can use all three, they should give you the same number. In practice, that's not true. So you kind of have to evaluate, and even in his appraisal, if you look all the way through it, they're going to use the cost approach in there, they're going to use sales comparison approach, and then they'll reconcile the differences between them. In mass appraisal, we primarily, like I said, use the cost approach. That's what our software is based on, but you're still comparing to sales, and you can still run sales comparisons to make sure your model's producing numbers. Now, this property is a high-end property. It's what we call overbuilt. It's not going to sell for what it cost him to build it at. So the biggest question is, how big is that discount? City of Mandan does provide a discount, just like we do. We've got a few in the county that are that large. They're not going to sell for what it costs to build those things. So you have to discount them down based on what you think that sales is going to be. So is that kind of clear it up hopefully a little more?
Yeah.
So, the biggest difference between mass appraisal and private party appraisal is we're using a model, plugging information into and producing values, still using those same approaches. And a private property, they're looking only at that property. They don't have to look at thousands of properties like we do.
Okay.
So we have to do it quickly. We have to get the whole city done, and in our case, the whole county done. So we have to use a mass appraisal and kind of do a, a model that produces values, and then like I said, we have to track them against those sales still, to make sure we're producing values that are the same as what the sales are.
Mr. Chairman, question?
Yes.
Or, Don? Question is, you know, the, the house, if you go past the house, go to the shop. Even the examples that are here, compare it to a shop condo that can be open for rent and have a business is usually in an industrial or commercial district. I mean, I can understand why they have to be here for a comparison. You know, they're all in that $200,000 range that are here. Some are higher. But you go to the lowest end, you have 225,000 on what was presented. You look at the shops then on the next page, which are separate, but they also look like they're in commercial or industrial areas. And the cheapest one there is 200,000, all the way up to higher. Maybe a small home business could be run out of that shop, as long as it doesn't violate zoning. But it isn't going to be like you can run a big massive business out of it either. So the 200,000 on the shop, I would feel comfortable with, leaving the dwelling at the same price as what's basically listed. And I, my quick math then would be, the whole property then would be 2,169,500, unless I did the math wrong.
You did.
I'll trust your math because I don't know those numbers in front of me, but.
Basically, all I did was took the same total value that's on this page, subtracted the shop value, and then added 200,000 for the shop value to come up with 2,169,500.
Okay. You subtracted 137,000.
Yes. Thank you. Much more simpler.
137,700 is what you subtracted.
Because I don't see enough justification to justify the 337,000. Not saying it's wrong. It's just if I was in, I was sitting on a jury and listening to this in court, I would be going, what's the, still, what's the justification?
Just a few comments first on shops in general. City of Mandan has the same problem the county does. When these shops are built, they usually aren't built by themselves, they're built with a house. When they sell, they sell with the house.
Yes.
You really don't know how much of that was land, how much of that was house, and how much of that was shop. So we don't have sales of just shops. That's why the city kind of had to go to that industrial commercial to get some type of sales comparison. Number two, my understanding of Mr. Frank's, and we have one in the county that's in the same boat, these are not shop condos. This is substantially better finished than a shop condo is. So what is the sale value of that becomes the question. Would it sell for more than what a shop condo would? Would it sell for less? That's the question on the table.
But it's not selling without the house.
It's not selling without the house. It's on the same property as the house. And like I said, we have that same problem in the county. So we try to value those shops, but we don't have sales of individual shops. So we try to value those shops, but we don't have sales of individual shops to use.
Maybe Ford could cause that.
Yep.
Well, this is probably one of the deals, wife loves the house, man loves the shop, and let's buy it. You know? But I do believe though, Mr. Chairman, Don, that 200,000 would be more fair. Candidly, it's going to be virtually impossible to split up the property. There's not enough evidence, in my opinion, to justify 337,000 on the shop building alone. 200,000, I believe that evidence is fair.
Okay.
And the bank said it was 180?
188.
188. I do believe 200,000 would be fair, based on the evidence also by the city.
Any other discussion or comments? Or a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion if you're ready.
I am ready.
Ms. Chairman, I would move to reduce the value of the home located at 2503 Macedonia Avenue Southeast. It's a home and shop combination. To reduce the value of the shop to 200,000, making the entire property value at 2,169,500.
What's your reduction?
What's your total reduction? We need that amount.
137,700.
137,700.
Okay.
Do we have a second?
I can second.
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman, since you're waiting.
Yeah, I was about ready to say something. It's been moved and seconded to reduce the overall value of the Frank House from 200, 2,307,200 to 2,169,500, which is a reduction of 137,700, specifically on the shop value. Is there any discussion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I've got one, one comment to make. I'm not, I'm not disputing the property should go down to some extent, and maybe this is the best way to do it, I just don't know. But I believe we're going to be back into this at some point if we're breaking out the shop separate, and maybe that's a fight for another day. But, because that's, I think that's a very minimal assessment on that, on that building. But again, it's, is it, is it appropriate to lower the valuation of the, the entire property? Maybe so.
Any further comments? Any other discussion? Seeing none, do a roll call vote. Commissioner Zachmyer.
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Buckley?
Yes.
Commissioner Tocash?
Yes.
And myself, yes, with Commissioner Morrell abstaining, so...
Thank you so much, Commissioners. Greatly appreciate it.
Thank you for coming in. All right, do we have anybody else for the City of Mandan? Do we have anybody online for the City of Mandan? We have a guest and an SD up there that I don't know who they are. Do we have anybody else for the City of Mandan in room or, I don't, there's none in room, so be online. One last call for the City of Mandan. Okay. The guest one, Mike has been on the whole time. Okay, Don, there's some other ones on that list there.
Yeah, so we, we still have to deal with those. The guest account up there is...
I'll close the comments, otherwise then...
Okay. The guest account up there is my wife, so they will not be appealing, so you can ignore that one. But we do have to deal with a couple more Mandan properties that sent in emails.
Yes.
So Kim, do you want to...
Yeah, just read their letter.
You stay on here even? There's Walmart.
All right, we're going to read the, the letter from Kyle Kennett, from representing Walmart. Dear members of the Morton County Board of Equalization, I am writing to formally appeal the 25, 2025 assessed value of my property located at 1,000 Old Red Trail Northwest Mandan, parcel number 655187,000. In support of my appeal, I've attached a third-party fee appraisal that concludes a market value of $9 million as of February 1st, 2025. After reviewing the evidence, I believe the value of the property should be assessed at $11,560,000. However, I'm open to discussion and compromise regarding this matter. Due to scheduling conflict, he planned to attend online. Please note if we have any questions or further information. I am more than willing to address any concerns you may have. And it's signed by Kyle Kennett, the Senior Manager of Special Tax of Walmart Stores, Inc. In the packet, I just included some comments that I have that on 5/20/25, the building was reviewed by the City of Mandan assessing and the Morton County Tax Equalization Office. We did note that we had square footage differences between the appraisal and our records. The comparable, we did include in our packet comparable valuations of other Walmarts in North Dakota. We rely mostly on the cost approach. We do have comparable sales in Bismarck of large buildings like this. With those sales from 2021 through 2024, we had a range of sales from $69 to $95 per square foot. Our assessment is 74.28 on just the building value, so we think that we are in the correct range for the value of Walmart. I stand for any questions.
So your sub, your total value for 2025 would be 15,800,000. Make sure I got the right...
That is correct.
Right numbers here. And he says it came in at 9 million and would agree to 11,560.
That is correct.
Okay. That's what I saw before. So your price per square foot is lower than anything that's, except one that's older, built year prior?
Looking at the comparables across the state?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
And, and I'm actually just the Bismarck one.
Oh, on the Bismarck sales.
Just the Bismarck sales alone?
Yeah, we are within range, I think. We're being reasonable.
You're low.
And I think it's more appropriate to use the, the sales in Bismarck than the sales in the appraisal where some of them aren't. I think there was even some from Minnesota and South Dakota, so I think it'd be more appropriate to use a Bismarck comparable.
Yeah, stuff sells different Fargo than it does here. Nobody's come online. Yep. Don, your wife finally shut her microphone off, though. Now that she knows we're watching. Commissioners, have any questions for Kim on the Walmart appeal? And if not, what are your wishes? I would think by now somebody would have come online if they had the chance. Two hours in.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion. We deny the appeal for Walmart.
Okay. Running again with the microphone on? That's these two right here. Okay, Ray, Andy. It's been moved to deny the appeal by, for their tax appraisal by Walmart. Is there any discussion? It's been moved and seconded, sorry. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call vote. Commissioner Morrell?
Yes.
Commissioner Zachmyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Buckley?
Yes.
Commissioner Tocash?
Yes.
And myself, a yes. Okay, Kim.
Chairman, Bane Commissioners, on page 28 in your packet were some other recommended changes for the City of Mandan. A couple were ones that we reviewed after the City Board of Equalization met, they called after that. And then we also had several properties that experienced some fire damage. So those are what we have listed on there.
Okay.
Fires that have happened since our City Board of Equalization.
And Mr. Chair, just for the record, two of the names listed, or two of the properties listed on here are presented tonight as well.
Say that again.
On page 28, as, two of the names...
Yeah, Schuler and Suger.
Correct.
Yep, they were up there. Got those two. The KAL properties, that's not Walmart, is it?
No, those are some apartment complex-type buildings.
Got it, got it.
Mr. Chair, make a motion that we accept the additional recommendations from the City of Mandan, based on the data presented.
All right. They moved to approve the recommended changes from the City of Mandan, based on the information presented. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Morrell?
Aye.
Commissioner Tocash?
Yes.
Commissioner Buckley?
Yes.
Commissioner Zachmyer?
Yes.
And myself, a yes. Motion carries. Do have one question. I had an email from Jim and Jen Skj, S-K-J-O-D.
That's coming.
That is, that's a county one, okay. Just wanted to make sure I'm not missing that one. Okay. I didn't want to forget that one.
For the City of Mandan, with the Frank adjustment that you made, the final numbers would be residential, 2,138,281,600, and then the commercial and agricultural remain unchanged from what's on page 28.
Okay. Just doing the math on that.
Did you check him?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve the valuations from the City of Mandan with residential at 2,138,281,600, commercial at 907,768,800, and agricultural at 314,600.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the appraisal values from City of Mandan at 2,138,419,300 for residential, 907,768,800 for commercial, and 314,600 for agricultural.
Just a quick correction on that. The residential is 2,138,281,600.
Yes.
Isn't that what I said? Isn't that what I said?
You read the number that's on page 28, but that number has been changed.
Okay, I read the black line, the bold one. Thank you. With that correction, is there any discussion?
How much of that increase is that from last year?
About 4.1%.
That's 2% more than the legislative rule of four.
We're not done. We're not done. We still have the rest of Morton County to address. So, Mr. Chair, for me, the question was how much of an increase this equates to, this is just the City of Mandan. Morton County has to assess for all of Morton County, all the, all the jurisdictions. So when we get down to the bottom line, then we start working our budgets, that's when that comes into play.
Yeah, I was just going to say that 3% does not apply to assessments. There is no cap on assessments. The 3% is how much each entity can budget for property taxes.
And to clarify for the audience in the room, as well as the audience listening in, by state law, we are required to maintain our, our valuations within 90 to 100% of what the market rate is. And if we fail to do that, then the state will come in and do all this for us. So just want to make that aware also.
Okay, is there any further discussion on the motion on the floor for the City of Mandan? Any discussion? Any discussion? Commissioner Morrell?
Aye.
Commissioner Buckley?
Yes.
Commissioner Zachmyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Tocash?
Yes.
And myself would be a yes. Motion carries.
Yeah.
Okay. It takes long, lots of time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Ready to move on to City of New Salem?
Yes, let's move on to City of New Salem.
Okay. So at the New Salem Board of Equalization, they approved values of residential, 58,797,100. Commercial was 12,614,300, and agricultural 195,300. There were three adjustments that were approved at the New Salem Board of Equalization, those are at the bottom there, and there are no further adjustments that we have, but I know we do have one appeal for the City of New Salem, so unless there's any questions, I will stand aside for that.
No, nobody's standing. We will open appeals from the City of New Salem.
I know.
He sent us an email, but the email switched over. I don't know if you got it.
No, we got it, but we appreciate having it in hand, though, sometimes.
I'm going to have to pick up that email switch over.
Thank you.
Chairman, Bane Commission, good evening. Otto Daron, good evening. My name is Mitchell Earhart. Coming to you about our property, the address is 1201 Ash Avenue in New Salem. And I'll kind of summarize kind of what happened over the course of the last couple of years. We bought this property, two lots combined to be 4.12 acres, in October of '22, and our plan was to build a house on that property. Through some negotiations with a builder, we did not... um, negotiations with a builder, um, we did not go with the builder we had initially. Um, and in the summer of twenty-four, um, I was mowing the property, came across our neighbor to the east. He said, uh, hey, you know what's going on with, uh, between our properties? I said, no idea. Uh, Public Service Commission says possible mines, uh, coal mine under our, under this property. Um, and he encouraged me to contact the Public Service Commission, which I did. Um, so I met with Brett Jobe, was his name, at the Public Service Commission. He is the person tasked with this. It's called the abandoned mine reclamation project. Uh, and he stated that the McCormick Mine was in the area, uh, and the map, and they had a map drawn in nineteen twenty-four that showed a tunnel running, um, to the east of my property and the south end of my property. Their job at that time was to validate that that map was even, um, true. So in the packet that I gave you, that is the uh, the second page. Um, what is in yellow is the map that was drawn. The magenta on the outside is kind of the footprint where they think the, the mine may have been. And that was the initial one. Uh, through some discussion with, um, Brett Jobe, uh, he recommended that we do not build on this property uh, based upon, uh, possible, um, coal mines underneath, uh, the property. Uh, received the email from him on June twenty-first, uh, that he stated because of presence of known mining in the area, this location, if we decide to build, we recommend, we highly recommend you conduct exploratory drilling adjacent, uh, adequate to determine whether building site is undermined prior to any construction. Uh, in July of twenty-four, we hired, um, the same, same company that was doing the drilling for the Public Service Commission. Um, and we asked them to drill holes where we proposed to put our house. And that is, um, the, it'd be the fourth page. Fourth, I guess, uh, fourth page in, uh, drawing shows a house. And our, uh, proposal was to drill a hole in each corner of the house and one in the middle. Um, the first hole he drilled was to the east. Um, so the right side of the page, uh, that was solid. Drilled a hole to the north and found a void, um, at that hole, or at that spot. Um, so we told him to stop drilling. There's no sense in drilling more holes if we can't put a house there. Um, and, and we basically stopped, uh, the process. We were, this was on a, on a Wednesday. We were supposed to close on the, uh, construction loan on Friday. Um, and so these holes, to drill two holes, would cost us about nine thousand bucks. Um, contacted the builder and, uh, the bank and said, you know, all stop till we figure out what's going on. Uh, in the winter of twenty-twenty-five, uh, Public Service Commission conducted more exploratory drilling uh, to the north of our property along Highway ten, and we gave them permission to drill on the west side of our property. Um, there are two, uh, reports from the Public Service Commission. The first one is the twenty-twenty-four exploratory drilling, and it, and this includes everything that they were doing then. But if you go back to, um, the first picture in that one, it's figure one of the twenty-twenty-four exploratory drilling, New Salem project drilling map. Um, you'll notice, uh, the red circles are voids and the blue is not voids. If you take that map and kind of compare it to, uh, the first, the twenty-twenty-four map, um, you'll notice that, uh, the property to the east of mine, right along the south end, there is a long series of voids. And then to the west side, there's, uh, some voids right at the south end of where my property would be. And then north, uh, right along Highway ten, which corresponds more or less to that map. Uh, but they validated basically that the map that was drawn in nineteen twenty-four, uh, closely resembled to what they actually found. Um, and then, uh, a little bit later in that packet is the twenty-twenty-five drilling project. And the first page of that, uh, figure one of the twenty-twenty-five exploratory drilling project, uh, map, um, they drilled along, uh, Highway ten, which is Ash Avenue, and they found many, uh, voids along, um, Ash Avenue. In the west side of my property, uh, they found a void to the northwest corner and several voids to the southwest corner. Um,
Yeah.
In twenty-twenty-five, um, we decided that we were, we had a
Yeah.
A person who contacted us right as all this was going on, and they said, hey, we want to buy your property. Um, we had to disclose, of course, that we knew that there was a void right in the middle of it, at the north spot that we had. Um, and they contingently put a offer in, if they could find a place to build a house, they would buy the property. Um, and they offered us about eighty percent of the value, uh, then. Um, and as you can see from that twenty-twenty-five project, they drilled down the west-hand side, found, um, voids in the north and south corners. Um, and that, that, uh, couple backed out of that project, said we, we're uncomfortable with this, um, buying of this property. Uh, so what I'm asking the commission for is, um, well, what I'm stating really is a couple things. Um, Public Service Commission says that, uh, they don't recommend, um, building a structure on this property without drilling. We tried to do that, found a void. Um, cost us about nine thousand dollars to drill two holes. I can't just drill a bunch of holes on the property and determine where a safe spot would be to build a house. Um, we tried to sell the property, couldn't sell the property because, uh, without knowing what's underneath. Um, in some discussions of how you could fix it, um, the kind of rough guess was about an eight-by-eight foot mine, a hundred feet long, would be about sixty thousand dollars to fill it full of grout. Um, once the void is full of concrete, then it's not a problem because the roof can't cave in, uh, basically. Um, so what I'm asking the commission to do is to keep this property, um, zoned as residential. I mean, at some point, um, it, there's a century code for the mine reclamation project. I think they have like ten priorities. Public safety is kind of number one. Structures that currently exist. Number two, if we would have built the house in twenty-three, when they came around to do it, they would have to fix any void found underneath their property, but we didn't do this. Um, way down on the list, like number nine or number ten, is to fix any land that's above an abandoned mine. Um, I don't know when or if that really is ever going to happen. So what I'm asking the, the commission to do is to return the taxable, taxable amount to the agricultural tax value it was before it was switched over to residential. Um, that's what I'm asking the commission to do. Um, and standing by for any questions.
But still leave it as residential?
Leave it as residential, yep. I mean, my, my goal, of course, would be to get back the hundred and ten thousand dollars that I spent on this property. I mean, that would be my goal, but there's not, I can't do that in the foreseeable future.
Not right now.
Can't sell it. It's not worth anything right now.
I said, was that one of them? New Salem Equalization Meeting, PSC, was there, and I think they said there's water in there?
Um, so what, yeah, what, um...
Kind of holding it up, maybe, for now.
Or eating, eroding it away.
One or the other, yeah.
What, what, um, I was told that mine, um, in about nineteen fifty-three-ish, somewhere next category, um, there was a fire in the building that housed the pumps that were keeping the mine dry. Um, and once that, once that building started on fire, the pumps blew, you know, started on fire, and the mine filled up with water. And within a couple of years, they stopped. They abandoned the project. Um, until nineteen seventy-seven, there were no rules on landmines in, in the country, is the way that I understand it. So they could, they could mine and, and just walk away, and there was no consequences for doing that. So that's why this abide, abandoned mine reclamation project is in, is in place in the first place.
So just a comment, I was noticing on the, that second page that you provided us the early map of the, with the yellow and the
Yep.
Purple, whatever that is. It versus the ones where they've last drilled holes. They don't consider that mine over there at that point, do they? Because your property is right to the west of those trees.
Correct.
And there's holes there, but their old mine lines in yellow are to the east.
Like, but this...
So there's a void over there somehow.
Somehow, that, you know, this map was, was, uh, drawn in nineteen twenty-four. They mined for, till nineteen fifty-three-ish.
They might have gone over how many times?
Went anywhere, yeah. I mean, they, they may have went east underneath the city of New Salem. You know, it's further north. They, they really don't know, um, where it's at past. But their public, you know, the public safety is their kind of number one priority. Um, and that's what they got to fix first, and that's Highway ten, that's what they're concentrating.
Commissioners, have any questions for Mitch?
Uh, go ahead. Mr. Chairman, just a comment. I'm, I'm I understand the situation and I'm, I'm on, I'm supporting, providing some relief here. My bigger question, I don't know if anyone on the Planning and Zoning Commission care to, uh, to comment on keeping this residential versus turning it back and...
It's in extra territory of New Salem. It's not our jurisdiction, yeah.
Okay, okay.
It's theirs.
That's coming. I was just gonna make this as the city of New Salem, so county has no jurisdiction there.
Yeah. That's all I needed to know.
Um, just a few, um, further points on this. Um, this isn't the first time we've run into this issue. There's some lots just to the south and a little bit to the east. Uh, a few years ago, they contacted me. We had raised their values. And they said that the Public Service Commission was recommending, there's mines under there, don't build on it. I contacted the Public Service Commission, got that exact same answer. We did return those to an agricultural value, even though they are residential on the city of New Salem planning and zoning. So when Mitch contacted me, and of course, I was very familiar with this because we're dealing with it on another house, um, which is right next to Mitch there. Um, so I knew what was going on. Um, his property is very likely undermined and a lot of it, whether there's a buildable place on there or not, we don't know. Um, but obviously there is mine underneath it, without a doubt. Um, so I recommended that same, um, approach be taken, that leave it as residential, but treat it as agricultural as far as an assessment. That lowers it to two thousand two hundred based upon the twenty-twenty-five numbers. Um, and then we would just kind of keep it up at that approach. Unless we do find out, Mitch finds a substantial area where it could be built upon, and then at that point, we can reverse that. But that seems like a fair approach to be inconsistent with what we have done in the past in New Salem.
And we can do that without going back to New Salem?
Yeah, it's the way it's treated for assessments and the way it's zoned, those don't need to correlate. So it can be assessed or, or zoned residential, but treated as agricultural for the purposes of taxation.
Okay.
Especially since it's on the outskirts of the city. If it was in the center of the city, it would, you would have to leave it as residential. And then we would just be talking about a reduction in value, but since this is on the outskirts and it's not built all around it, um, it definitely could get a, uh, agricultural value or assessment for property tax purposes.
Mr. Chair and commissioners, Mr. LaFleur, and then actually, Mr. Earhart and I, we've discussed this several times in the last, last few months. So same, same dialogue as far as the possibility of taking it to an agricultural taxation base.
So my recommendation to you guys would be to switch it to an agricultural valuation of two thousand two hundred for twenty-twenty-five.
Yeah.
So we don't have to change it. We're gonna get the valuation we currently have. So we're at thirty-seven thousand, one hundred currently, so we would be reducing it to two thousand two hundred and switching it from residential to agricultural, um, for the valuation purposes.
For valuation, but it still stays residential as a zoning.
As zoning.
Got it.
But it'll be taxed as agricultural.
You said twenty-two hundred is where we'll be?
Yep.
Thirty-four, nine hundred difference.
Thirty-four, nine.
Mr. Chairman, question?
Yes, Commissioner Zachmeyer.
Why wouldn't New Salem approve that?
This was not appealed at the city of New Salem Board of Equalization. Um, Mitch at that time had that contingent offer on the table. Um, so I don't think he felt the need to appeal it there. Um, that sale fell through after the city of Board of Equalization. And then that's when Mitch approached me and said, what can we do about this now? I can't sell it. And then that was my recommendation, was to switch it.
Mr. Chairman, it's being used as an agricultural purpose now, correct?
Um, no, Mitch has planted trees all around that lot. Um, they're young trees. I'm sure that cost him a lot of money. Um, it was agricultural prior to this, um, subdivision being put in by the city of New Salem. Um, but at that point, they switched to residential, and when Mitch bought it, he combined two lots into one, and he planted trees all around the perimeter. So it could still easily be returned to an agricultural value if Mitch could find that farmer to the south. Put this up on the overhead here.
There you go.
There we go. Um, so Mitch's property is right. He was right there. Um, so there's a farmer's field. Right there. Um, so that would be one potential, but I don't know if Mitch is quite there yet. I think his, he'd still rather sell it as a residential property if he can. Um, but that is contingent upon finding the right buyer who's willing to accept that risk. Um, and there is a substantial cost to either drilling to find a safe place, or if you can't find a safe place, making one by filling in that mine. Um, from what we heard from PSC, it is unlikely that they will be stepping in on this one. Their priority is the road and existing structures not helping vacant lots become buildable lots.
It's probably connected down there somewhere. It's gonna run all over.
There's a potential.
Yeah, that, that, like, that was my idea, too.
Who knows?
You know, they, they fixed the road. The grout that they put in would run into my property and fix it. But they drilled a hole and they put, um, a blocker in there, basically stiffer concrete to create a wall so that doesn't go that way. Because otherwise, they would be pumping grout until the entire mine is, you know, in theory, unless there's something blocking the path.
And PSC also mentioned that some of these have migrated up. When they're drilling these holes, they're finding the voids at different levels. So it is possible, we're already getting a collapse that is coming up. They said if nothing is done at the, um, Board of Equalization in New Salem, they said if nothing is done, it is likely eventually, over time, these mines will migrate to the surface. It's just a matter of how long that can be. They don't know. This mine is way deeper than anything they've dealt with, and so there's a lot of uncertainty. And they did mention it's also filled with water, and that creates another uncertainty into when that would happen.
Two hundred feet down, isn't it?
Over two hundred feet, yeah, is what they said.
Two eighty, okay. Yeah, it was down there. I noticed that. Okay. No, when I talked, I was talking to those guys. Smart Alex.
He had to get one in.
He got one good one in. Commissioners, have any questions, or do we have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve the appeal for, what's the property address?
Uh, one-two-zero-one Ash Avenue.
For one-two-zero, one-two-zero Ash Avenue.
Zero.
Um, with evaluation of two thou- one-two-zero-one Ash Avenue West in New Salem with the evaluation of two thousand two hundred, bringing in, uh, an adjustment of thirty-four thousand, nine hundred dollar decrease.
And also a switch from residential to agricultural.
What he said.
I'll second that.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to adjust, uh, grant the appeal for twelve oh-one Ash Avenue West, New Salem, for a decrease in thirty-four thousand, nine hundred, and change the assessment from residential to agricultural. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Morell?
Yes.
Commissioner Tocash?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Commissioner Zachmeyer?
Yes.
And myself would be a yes. Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Now, we need, now we got a different number, right?
Yep. I am fifty-eight, seven, sixty-two, two hundred.
You gotta take it out of residential entirely and then add it to-
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
To get it removed completely from residential.
Okay. We have to approve the other appeals there.
Okay, we got another appeal, so let's take that while we're getting numbers.
Yep.
Commissioner, Chairman, I'm Zach Hansen. I live just, well, I don't, I live in New Salem, but we own the properties just to the west of Mitch. So we are in the same situation. It'd be, we didn't apply for one to be probably twelve oh-three. We can-
Yeah, you can pull it up.
Yep, just the next two, yeah.
Yeah.
So parcel number six-six-zero-four-zero-eight-three-two-five and parcel number six-six-zero-four-zero-eight-three-zero-zero.
Okay. So two narrower ones, right?
Yeah, just before the cemetery. So he's between Mitch and the cemetery.
So you got holes on either side of you.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, were you also doing the thirty-one hundred to the left?
No, thirteen-one hundred. Don circled that. Don, Don got a little larger than the circle.
Yeah, I got my circle.
It, uh-
It's exempt.
It's actually right under the line. There's two of them there. Yeah.
Going upside down. These two right? Right there.
Zach.
Did you see that block?
Yep. Even Nathan can see black.
Go ahead.
We're, we're just um asking if you'd consider um as you're considering Mitch's property as well for the decrease.
By doing the same thing. What, um, Don, what is the property value at, for those two? Not that it matters. Yeah, or the assessed value?
Yep, assessed value, so we have thirty-five thousand eight hundred for each.
For each?
Thirty-five, yeah, he's still got his separated, so each one has thirty-five thousand eight hundred. Um, they are as, they're zoned residential, just like Mitch's. We're treating it as commercial because they're vacant right now, so they're commercial vacant lots. So to be consistent on that, I think if we just put eleven hundred on each, he'd be two thousand two hundred, just like Mitch.
Yeah, so it's seventy-one-six is your total, and we'd be coming back down to twenty-two, forty-four hundred.
Mr. Chairman, is there a nine-one-one address on this?
No. So, Don, Mitch's lot is bigger.
He, Mitch took two lots and combined them.
And so these two-
These two are still separated. It was four lots in that subdivision, right between the existing house and the cemetery.
So for the two together, it'd be forty-four hundred then.
And there's a little less certainty on whether these are undermined, but as the Public Service Commission said, they went west. Um, so I think there's a high risk of it still. And until we know more, I think it's appropriate just to switch it all to agricultural and leave it that way until we find out more.
Yeah, because that, their line along the highway gets over to those properties. The drilling holes will get over that far, at least the first one.
Yeah, they got, the same recommendation, same recommendation we have to the south. Don't build. If you do build, you're doing that your own risk because PSC is not gonna help you.
So, Mr. Chair, again to Mr. LaFleur to clarify, so obviously we got the seventy-one-six hundred combined assessed value for the two parcels. So does that mean we're at twenty-two hundred or are we at forty-four hundred?
Um, since Mitch is two lots as well and his combined is two thousand two hundred, I think you would put one thousand one hundred in each lot to get a combined value of two thousand two hundred, just like Mitch's.
Okay.
At this point. And then we'll just treat it as agricultural and value it as such moving forward. Like I said, until we find out more or things change.
So we'll decrease it sixty-nine-four is what I've got.
John's crunching the numbers first.
Am I right?
He's got a lot of work to do because he's gotta switch it on a wind column, put another one.
But the overall drop would be sixty-nine-four.
Yeah. You, you basically are gonna subtract it all out of the commercial line and then add it into the agricultural line. So the overall adjustment will be a little more involved, but that is the difference.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve the appeal of said parcels. I'm trying to read the numbers up there again. Of said parcels and converting them um assessed value from residential to agricultural. Uh, bringing a, an assessed value reduction of sixty-nine thousand four hundred.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to approve the assessment, or the appeal to reduce the assessment sixty-nine thousand four hundred on the two parcels that were discussed and change them to an agricultural assessment of two thousand two hundred in the combined lots.
For the record, those parcel numbers are six-six-zero-four-zero-eight-three-hundred and six-six-zero-four-zero-eight-three-two-five are the two parcels.
All right. Is there any discussion?
One question for Don LaFleur is, we have these under residential or these under commercial?
These are zoned residential, but since there's no house on them yet, they become commercial vacant lots for assessment purposes.
Deducting it out of the commercial valuation.
Yep, so we'll be deducting both Mitch's and this one out of commercial and adding it into agricultural.
Okay.
And John will get us those numbers.
Out of commercial and not residential?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I misspoke earlier. They are commercial vacant lots because there's no home on them.
Okay. All right, so this is, I guess I get more discussion. Is there any further discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Morell?
Yes.
Commissioner Zachmeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Buckley?
Yes.
Commissioner Tocash?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Motion carries. Grant the appeal.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So do we have to approve the other adjustments then, too?
Um, yes. Well, those were approved by-
So we just approve the final numbers now?
Yeah, John will get his final numbers here in one second, then we'll approve those.
Twelve-five-oh-five-six-hundred.
Um, yeah, I'm not even going there yet. I'll just wait.
And agriculture is one-ninety-nine-seven-hundred.
Yeah, we go up by four, four hundred, so one-ninety-nine-seven is-
Because the fifty, the residential's gonna stay.
It's gonna be there.
Doesn't change. Okay, and what's commercial? Okay, agriculture.
One-ninety-nine-seven.
That's right. I got the same.
So the final numbers for the city of New Salem with the adjustments approved by New Salem and the adjustments approved by you, um, residential remains unchanged at fifty-eight million seven-hundred-and-ninety-seven thousand one hundred. Commercial is reduced to twelve million five-hundred-and-five-thousand-six-hundred, and agricultural is increased to one-hundred-and-ninety-nine-thousand-seven-hundred.
Just a quick question on the exemptions for New Salem, the five-year exemption, what was that?
Um, New Salem participates in Centricode. It allows new homes to have an exemption on them for two years. Um, so tho- those exemptions came in late. Um, so we took them to the Board of Equalization and approved both the exemption and the adjustment to the property um for that. So that's what those two are.
A five-year exemption?
Um, oh, sorry, these are improvements to existing properties.
Okay.
And those are for five years. New homes is two years. If you improve a home and it's old enough, um, Centricode specifies whole, I think it's twenty years old, it has to be, um, then you get five years.
Okay, thank you.
And basically it freezes the value at what it was prior to you starting the improvement, and you carry that value for five years, and then after the five years, it then pops up to whatever it should be.
So, Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we accept the, or we approve the valuation from the City of New Salem for residential at fifty-eight million seven-hundred-and-ninety-seven thousand one hundred dollars, commercial at twelve million five-hundred-and-five-thousand-six-hundred dollars, and agricultural at one-hundred-and-ninety-nine-thousand-seven-hundred dollars.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the valuations for the City of New Salem at fifty-eight thousand seven-hundred-and-ninety-seven thousand one hundred, excuse me, fifty-eight million seven-hundred-and-ninety-seven thousand one hundred. For residential, twelve million five-hundred-and-five-thousand-six-hundred for commercial, one-hundred-and-ninety-nine-thousand-seven-hundred for agricultural. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Morell?
Yes.
Commissioner Buckley?
Yes.
Commissioner Tocash?
Yes.
Commissioner Zachmeyer?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Motion carries.
Okay, I think we're done with the City of New Salem. So moving on, next is the City of Flasher. Um, at their Board of Equalization, they approved residential value of eight million two-hundred-and-five-thousand-one-hundred, commercial value of two million six-hundred-and-ninety-five-thousand-seven-hundred. There were two adjustments for the Farmers Union that the City of Flasher approved, so those are in those numbers. Um, so unless there's any further appeals.
Separate buildings or something?
Um, it was their- They were the grain elevators, right?
Yep.
Yeah, two different parcels.
Okay.
Right across the street from each other today. So they have, so grain bins on them, and we went in there and reassessed those grain bins. They were over-assessed according to our standards.
Okay.
So we went in and adjusted them for them. They're quite old. They're abandoning that property. They're rebuilding up north. If everybody knows what's going on in Flasher, um, they are rebuilding this to the north side of this.
Oh, they're gonna rebuild the whole thing.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I will open comments for the City of Flasher. And I don't think there's anybody in the room, but we will check online. Is there any comments from, yeah, unless Heidi wants to comment?
Or my wife wants to jump in and comment. She goes to the City of Flasher.
I will make it official and call three times, though. Any comments for the City of Flasher? Any appeals for the City of Flasher? Seeing none, I will close the comments for the City of Flasher.
Okay, moving on to the City of Glenoland.
Nope, we gotta vote on it.
Oh, sorry. Gotta add, you gotta approve the numbers.
Gotta approve them. So, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the approved value for the residential in the City of Flasher of eight million two-hundred-and-five-thousand-one-hundred, and for commercial property, two million six-hundred-and-ninety-five-thousand-seven-hundred.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the valuations for the City of Flasher at eight million two-hundred-and-five-thousand-one-hundred for residential, two million six-hundred-and-ninety-five-thousand-seven-hundred for commercial, uh, and zero for agricultural. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Buckley?
Yes.
Commissioner Morell?
Yes.
Commissioner Tocash?
Yes.
Commissioner Zachmeyer?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Motion carries. Move on to Glenoland.
So at their Board of Equalization, they approved residential value of twenty-eight million four-hundred-and-twenty-two-thousand-four-hundred, um, commercial value of six million nine-hundred-and-forty-three-thousand, and an agricultural value of forty-eight thousand six hundred. There was one adjustment that they approved at the um Board of Equalization for Glenoland. Um, they also directed us to work with a property owner following the Board of Equalization and bring that to the county. So at the bottom of the page there, you'll see a recommended adjustment to be approved by Morton County. We did review that property with the homeowner. It is undergoing a substantial remodel right now um, and is pretty torn apart as he's working on it. So we did make an adjustment to that value until that work is done, um, that you'll see there.
We need, we need to approve the bottom adjustment first.
Yeah, you'll need to approve that adjustment and then the numbers at the bottom of that one, if that, that one's approved, you'll see it, the numbers there.
Make a motion that we approve the um revised valuation for two oh-seven Fourth Street with a reduction of fifty-three thousand seven hundred dollars.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the reduction in property value or property assessment at two oh-seven Fourth Street South of fifty-three thousand seven hundred reduction. Is there any discussion? Should say Eden Glenoland. Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Morell?
Yes.
Commissioner Tocash?
Yes.
Commissioner Buckley?
Yes.
Commissioner Zachmeyer?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Motion carries. Now we got, the numbers are correct on the bottom then?
Yep.
If, with that adjustment in there?
With the adjustment, yep.
Okay. That's it? Oh, yeah, I guess should, to make it official, we have to ask for comments. Are there any appeals from the City of Glenoland? Any appeals for the City of Glenoland? And final call, appeals from the City of Glenoland. Seeing none, I will close the City of Glenoland. Now we can go ahead with the overall numbers.
Make a motion that we approve the valuations for the City of Glenoland with residential properties at twenty-eight million three-hundred-and-sixty-eight-thousand-seven-hundred, commercial properties at six million nine-hundred-and-forty-three-thousand, and agricultural properties at forty-eight thousand six hundred.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the assessed values of twenty-eight million three-hundred-and-sixty-eight-thousand-seven-hundred for residential, six million nine-hundred-and-forty-three-thousand for commercial, and forty-eight thousand six hundred for agricultural for the City of Glenoland. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All, seeing none, Commissioner Morell?
Yes.
Commissioner Tocash?
Yes.
Commissioner Buckley?
Yes.
Commissioner Zachmeyer?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Motion carries.
Okay, moving on to the City of Elmont. Um, so as you recall, the City of Elmont was sold late that their assessor that they've been using for years was unable to do them for twenty twenty-five. Um, so they requested the county to take that over, but we were just weeks out from the Board of Equalization. So we chose to keep their valuations the exact same as they were in the prior year, except where we had new construction, we did adjust the properties for the new construction. So at their Board of Equalization, they approved a residential value of three million seven-hundred-and-forty-four-thousand-one-hundred, commercial of nine-hundred-and-ninety-nine-thousand-seven-hundred, and agricultural of five-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand-three-hundred. There were no appeals, no adjustments to values, and we're not requesting any adjustments of you.
Okay, I will open comments for the City of Elmont. Comments from the City of Elmont? Or appeals? Comments from the City of Elmont. Seeing none, I will- Seeing none, I will close those comments, period. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the following valuations for 2025 for the City of Elmont. Residential, three million, seven-hundred-and-forty-four thousand, one hundred, commercial, nine-hundred-and-ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred, and agricultural, five-hundred-and-forty-five thousand, three hundred.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the valuations for the City of Elmont of three million, seven-hundred-and-forty-four thousand, one hundred for residential, nine-hundred-and-ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred for commercial, and five-hundred-and-forty-five thousand, three hundred for agricultural. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Tocash.
Yes.
Commissioner Zachmeyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Buckley.
Yes.
Commissioner Morell.
Yes.
And myself, yes, motion carries.
Okay, then the next step is to go to our townships, we just have one that is organized, so that is Captain's Landing Township. Um, so at the Board of Equalization for Captain's Landing Township, they approved residential value of twenty-six million, three-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand, three hundred, and commercial of five-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand. There were no appeals, we're not asking for any adjustments tonight.
I will open comments or appeals for this township of Captain's Landing, the organized township of Captain's Landing. Comments for the organized township of Captain's Landing, and one final call for comments for Captain's Landing. Seeing none, I will close the comments for Captain's Landing Township. Commissioners?
Make a motion that we approve the valuations for Captain's Landing Township with residential properties at twenty-six million, three-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand, three hundred dollars, and commercial at five-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the assessment values for the organized township of Captain's Landing of twenty-six million, three-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand, three hundred for residential and five-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand for commercial and zero for agricultural. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Morell.
Yes.
Commissioner Tocash.
Yes.
Commissioner Buckley.
Yes.
Commissioner Zachmeyer.
Yes.
And myself, yes, motion carries.
Okay, and before we get to the county numbers, I just have a few things I want to address with you that we've added this year, um, so, starting on page thirty-four is a summary of the work we do. Um, we put this in all the City Board of Equalization packets to kind of give everybody a better idea. Um, so the top part there where it has one, two, three, annual assessment for all zones, those are things we do every single year. Um, we're analyzing land values, we're looking at depreciation. Um, depreciation is just looking at the sales of older homes, what they're selling for, and then we add depreciation to kind of get our values down to what they're selling for. If you get enough sales at any particular age point, you can get a good idea of what that age point should be, um, and then you kind of just fill in in between there. Um, and then we're looking at doing a sales, or analysis for all the zones, that's where we're comparing our values to what is sold, and then we adjust what's called the map factor up or down depending on what we're seeing for sales. We do that for each independent zone where we have enough sales, where we don't have enough sales, we kind of gotta do some guesswork, um, but we try to set it accordingly to what we're seeing around there. Um, then for the zones undergoing this reassessment, which was Zone Four, the Herman Area Lake this year, there is a map, um, a couple pages in here, um, and for this year, we're gonna be doing Zone Five, which is to the west of Mandan and south of Mandan. So in that, we're gonna be looking at satellite imagery, um, remeasuring homes, we send out notification letters, which for Zone Five just went out. Um, within that letter, it does have a form where they can let us know the details of their home, we can compare it to what we have in our records, if there are discrepancies, we can correct them or request that, an inspection with the homeowner if we're seeing, um, too great of discrepancies there. They can also request a property inspection on their own, um, we'll set up appointments, we'll have an assessor visit their home, and then finally, at the end of the process, um, we will have a public meeting just like we did this year at the library, where they can come sit down with us, discuss their valuations, um, we can go through what we changed, why we changed it, um, and then if we have something wrong, we can do some home inspections as a result of the meeting this year. We did make a number of adjustments, which we'll be going through here in a sec, um, and did a few home inspections out of that, so it is a worthwhile process to come to that public meeting, and I would, um, highly recommend that homeowners, um, do that if they, um, have questions about their valuations, so. And then finally, we do sales reviews whenever we see a property sell, we do take a look at that, um, we're not looking to adjust ours to that sale price in that particular thing, what we're doing is we're looking at the information that we can get at the time of the sale, usually we'll have interior pictures, um, they'll count the bathrooms for us, um, we can get a good idea of the condition of the home, and whether they've done improvements, do they have a finished basement, those kind of things, and we can compare it to our records and then make adjustments to our records, um, to update them according to what we're seeing in that sales, like, so the goal is not to get to that sale price or make adjustments to get there, the goal is to make adjustments that are right and proper and accurate, and then the value will be what we have, whether that agrees to the sale, sometimes it's far below it, sometimes it's slightly above it, sometimes it's almost spot-on, it, it's just, it's a volatile market, so you're not always gonna hit the sales. Um, on the next page, thirty-five, I just want to address some misinformation that got out there. Um, we did provide some charts a couple years ago, there were a couple caveats in those charts, that it was residential only and excluded the City of Mandan. Unfortunately, um, a rumor got started that the Zones Three, Four, and Five, the area around Mandan is paying all of the county's property taxes, that is simply not accurate at all, um, so I felt I needed to address this head-on because we were seeing comments on Facebook to that extent and comments elsewhere, and we even got that in a few phone calls to us. So if you look at the chart at the bottom of the page there, the accurate information is City of Mandan pays sixty percent of the county's property taxes, um, and Zones Three, Four, and Five are much smaller, Zone Five is just a little over five percent, and then you have the Mandan Refinery that pays a pretty large percent of the county's property taxes, and then centrally assessed properties, that is your railroad, your pipeline, and your electrical transmission, I believe, Don, are the three that are centrally assessed. Um, so those values are done by the state and then given to Don Rowan to put in there, so centrally assessed properties pay, um, quite a bit, just a little over a million of the county's property tax values, so. So Zone Five is definitely the largest, or Zone Four, I should say, sorry, our Zone Four is Harmon Lake area, that is definitely the largest of the zones, but as far as paying all the county's property taxes, that is simply not accurate at all. The next page is that, um, map I was telling you about, um, I want to thank Mike Shrek, um, our GIS coordinator, um, for providing this with us, for us, it's a much better map, we have a big version of this that he printed for us hanging on the wall in our office, um, but this does show the zones and gives you a much better idea of where they lie. So this year, the area we were reassessing was Zone Four, um, and now this coming summer we'll be moving on to Zone Five. And then finally, on page thirty-seven, um, this chart we gave out of the City Board of Equalizations, I don't think we've addressed this at the County Board of Equalization, but Commissioner Morell did request that I do address this, so I put the chart in here. This just takes the exact same home, moves it around to the different cities, and then also around the area of Mandan, and shows what that home would be valued at. So the Flasher, it would be the lowest at just over a hundred thousand, um, Glen Olin is pretty close to Flasher, then it moves up a little more for Hebron. New Salem, it moves up quite a bit because, um, they do have a lot of effect from Mandan, and then finally, if it was around the City of Mandan, it would be close to two hundred thousand. So that just shows we do differ values, one of the comments we get quite a bit is, you're valuing my home as if it was by Mandan, I'm not by Mandan, well, that's not accurate at all, we do make adjustments depending on where you're at in the county and do reflect those sale prices. Then moving to page thirty-eight, um, this is the tolerance that the state requires us to do, so for your 2024, you guys approved a residential value of eight-hundred-and-ninety-eight million, two-hundred-and-forty-four thousand, six hundred. We do have to adjust that for any demolitions that occur to homes, so you can see that number there is four million, two-hundred-and-forty-four thousand, that is taken out, so we get a modified residential value of eight-hundred-and-ninety-four million. Then we have to divide that by our sales ratio for this year for residential, that sales ratio was ninety-one point eight, so that gets an indicated market value of nine-hundred-and-seventy-three thousand, eight-hundred-and-fifty, nine-hundred-and-seventy-three million, eight-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand, three-hundred-and-eighteen, that is your hundred percent value, ninety percent of that value would be eight-hundred-and-seventy-six million, four-hundred-and-seventy thousand, six-hundred-and-eighty-six, so the county's goal is to come in at ninety-two percent, so slightly above that ninety percent value, um, so our recommended value to you is nine-hundred-and-nineteen thousand, nine-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand, but we do have to subtract out the new construction, which for Morton County was twenty-one million, one-hundred-and-seventy-six thousand, five-hundred, so that arrives at a modified value of eight-hundred-and-ninety-eight million, eight-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand, and forty, and that is at ninety-two point three, so we came pretty close, a little bit over this year, but we're well within the tolerance. The next page does the same thing, I won't read it in detail, it's the commercial, um, that sales ratio was also ninety-one point eight, we came in at ninety-one point eight on both of them, um, so your hundred percent value is four-hundred-and-thirty-one million, um, four-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand, one-twenty-six, your ninety percent value is three-hundred-and-eighty-eight million, three-hundred-and-thirty-nine thousand, three-hundred-and-fourteen, um, and your modified commercial value is four-hundred-and-one thousand, one-hundred-and-thirty-two, four-sixty, which is at ninety-three percent, um, so a little bit higher than that ninety-two percent, but, um, we're still pretty close to it. And then finally, on page forty, we have the farm residence exemptions, um, this did come down for some reason this year, we didn't get as many as we normally get, um, but we got three-hundred-and-forty-five of them for a reduction of thirty-eight million, four-hundred-and-forty-three thousand, seven-hundred-and-eighty-one in total, you can see the breakdown by type there. And then finally, we get to, on page forty-one, we get to the Morton County numbers, um, so we started a residential, nine-hundred-and-twenty thousand, eight-hundred-and-sixty-eight, five-hundred, commercial, we had four-hundred-and-five thousand, um, thirty-three, four-hundred-and-five million, thirty-three thousand, eight-hundred, and agricultural, four-hundred-and-twenty-two million, thirty-six thousand, two-hundred. We did get a number of calls, um, and as a result of those calls, we did inspect those properties, like I said, some of those came from the me, public meeting at the, we had at the City Library. I think three or four of these came out of that. Um, so we are recommending adjustments after visiting these properties, as you see indicated there, um, and then we have new totals at the bottom if you approve them all. But I will stand aside for any appeals that come in, we did get a few emails that we do need to address, so even if we don't get appeals, I got a couple things to address.
Yeah, I know. Candace is new.
Yeah.
That one is pretty big, Don, that one for two-hundred-and-thirty-six?
Yeah, what happened on that one is they did come to the public meeting, um, theirs has been assessed as residential before I even became Tax Director, we left it that way with our assessment and just redid the properties in there, um, they came to the meeting and indicated they believed it should be agricultural, um, it was unfortunately a rather heated discussion, um, but the next day I did review Centricode to see what, if they were correct, and they were indeed correct. Um, if the property is zoned or plotted prior to nineteen eighty-one, you don't apply the seven tests, if it was agricultural, it remains that way until you put it to another use. This property was plotted before nineteen eighty-one, and it is zoned agricultural, so we did switch it to agricultural, we removed all of the ag use buildings because ag use buildings on agricultural land are exempt, so we removed all of those, um, and that resulted in a reduction of two-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand, two-hundred. Um, still, the property went up two-hundred thousand from the prior year, so it was up four-hundred thousand, now it's only up two-hundred thousand, so it is still is a substantial increase for them, but it, it was decreased. Well, um, we did send them a letter on this, I have not heard anything further from the property owners since the letter went out.
When Mr. Chairman, you see that the parcel for Jim Skay is in there also?
Yep, that's the one, I was thinking it was in Mandan, but...
Yeah, that's one of the appeals we'll have to address, even if we don't, I don't see anybody that's gonna come, but do your three calls, and I will address those.
All right, we can do that. I will open the comments for appeals for Morton County, on, what is it?
Unincorporated.
Any appeals from Morton County unincorporated? Last call for Morton County unincorporated. Seeing none, I will close the comments for Morton County unincorporated.
Okay.
We have the one, one email.
Then if you go to page forty-two, I believe this was emailed to the commissioners, um, for the sake of time, I won't read the whole thing, um, but they are appealing their valuation, they did use an online site, um, to, um, get a value for their property, um, I believe that was, site was Homebot, was the one that they submitted, um, and that had a valuation of just over four-hundred thousand compared to the four-hundred-and-thirty-thousand that we have on it. Um, however, looking at that site and pulling information on it, it is kind of like the Zillow estimate, it takes publicly available information and just kind of gives you a starting value for your home, that is not an appraisal, it's not a true value of the home, it's not to be used for property tax purposes or even an appraisal purpose, it is just a starting number to begin, um, if you have equity in your home, um, and would like to pursue that, then you would get a real appraisal done that would establish a number. Um, however, if you do look at that chart that they did submit, if you do consider Homebot to be an accurate valuation, on, in February of 2025, that site had their home at four-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand, which is pretty close to the four-hundred-and-thirty that we have on it, so for those reasons, we are recommending no change on this property.
Make a motion that we deny the appeal of thirty-seven, thirty-seven Rickarah Avenue based on the data just provided with inaccurate or, um...
Incorrect usage, I would say.
Sure, unreliable sources.
Yeah. Reliable for the purpose that they are, but that purpose is not this.
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded to deny the appeal for thirty-seven, thirty-seven Rickarah Avenue North is, uh, for...
Unreliable.
Unrelatable uses. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Morell.
Yes.
Commissioner Tocash.
Yes.
Commissioner Buckley.
Yes.
Commissioner Zachmeyer.
Yes.
And myself, yes, motion carries.
Okay, we have one more appeal to deal with, this did not come to you guys, it was just sent to us, that is for the property at one-nine-six-four County Road, one-thirty-eight A in Mandan, um, the homeowner, um, well, for context first, this home was not on the tax rolls, um, the homeowner contacted our office regarding a homestead credit, at that time we did discover that this home was not on the tax rolls, um, so I did send my assessors out. assessors out. They were at least allowed to view the outside of the property, so we got measurements, we got a pretty good idea of what was there. We put an assessment on it, sent a notice of increase to the tax owner. They returned that notice of increase to our office and indicated on there that they are appealing that assessment and that they believe that the value we have on there was excessive, and they believe it should be lower. However, the home was valued consistent with our standards and how we assess properties, so we see no reason to change it. Our assessment was on this house was just a little over 100,000. It is a little older home, I think 1930s, I'm accurate on that. So we think this assessment is fair and consistent with all the other properties.
There was no assessment before, and it's now 135,900.
Yep.
Yeah. It's a rural property, not, no agricultural use on it.
Just outside the city of Mandan.
Okay.
The true and full is 205,100.
The total true and full is 205,100, but the house itself is 100...
135,000.
135,000.
Make a motion that we deny the appeal for inability to provide substantiating evidence.
It's been moved and seconded to deny the appeal at 1964 County Road 138A for not having substantiating evidence. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Morell?
Yes.
Commissioner Tocash?
Yes.
Commissioner Buckley?
Yes.
Commissioner Zachmeyer?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Motion carries.
Okay, then that clears all the appeals that I had, so we haven't adjusted anything, so those numbers I have on page 41 should be still true and accurate. At the bottom of the adjustments, because you guys approved all those adjustments that we have on that page.
Make a motion that we approve the valuations for the unincorporated areas of Morton County with residential properties at 919,957,000, commercial properties at 405,31,700, and agricultural properties at 422,36,200.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Morton County unincorporated values at 919,957,000 for residential, 405,31,700 for commercial, and 422,36,200 for agricultural. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Morell?
Yes.
Commissioner Buckley?
Yes.
Commissioner Zachmeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Tocash?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Motion passes.
Okay, then our last item of business is just to approve the overall values. So I will get a sheet to whoever's going to make the motions, just raise your hand, but I'll read them off first. So for residential, the county unincorporated, or the total county with city of Mandan included is at 3,218,799,700. Agricultural value is 423,375,300. Commercial is at 1,346,433,346,433,500.
Okay. 1 billion, what was that last one? Ag. Oh, he switched them, yep. Ag and commercial is Shepherd.
I residential rate.
It's a lot of value.
Yeah.
Somebody make the motion.
Who's going to make the motion?
Who wants to make a motion?
I'll do it. I'll do it.
It's total county rate.
Make a motion that we approve the property valuations for all of Morton County and its incorporated cities, organized townships, and unincorporated areas of Morton County to include residential values of 3,218,799,700. Agricultural values at 423,375,300. Commercial value at 1 million, I'm sorry, 1 billion 346,433,500, bringing total valuations Can you imagine commissioners reading that 30 years ago?
I'll second.
Probably well under a billion at that time.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve the property valuations for Morton County for all incorporated and unincorporated areas at a total of residential for 3,218,799,700, agricultural 423,375,300, and commercial 1 billion 346,433,500 for a total of 4 billion Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Morell?
Yes.
Commissioner Tocash?
Yes.
Commissioner Buckley?
Yes.
Commissioner Zachmeyer?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Motion carries.
Thank you.
That's it. Now we can have a motion to adjourn the Board of Equalization unless somebody has something else.
Motion that we adjourn the Board of Equalization.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn the Board of Equalization. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, we are adjourned.